I think we're close enough to starting time. Would you please stand with me for, salute our nation's flag and remain standing for a moment of silence, please? Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in our land, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. This morning, we have two presentations, raising awareness of some serious issues that are not only indicative of problems within our culture and our county, but we're just happy to be able to do that today. And so, first, I'd like to have a presentation to adopt a resolution proclaiming September 5th through the 11th as Suicide Prevention Week in Tulare County. And as I understand it, Noah Whitaker is here this morning.
Morning Board members.
Good morning.
The Mortgage Bankers Association says one out of ten Americans is now behind on their mortgage.
Much less water for farmers in California's Central Valley.
A report out today says food prices have risen eight and a half percent in the past year.
A disturbing increase in gang violence has left communities throughout California's Central Valley terrifying.
The oil began spewing out of the seafloor after the Deepwater Horizon exploded April 20th and sank two days later.
A record 6.1 million Americans have been out of work more than six months, more than double the number who'd been jobless that long a year ago.
Suicide continues to be a prevalent issue in our community, and I think as the beginning of the video showed, there's a variety of factors that contribute to the risk of our community members. Over the last year, we've seen a variety of initiatives spearheaded by the task force to try and reach professionals in our community, to try and reach friends and family members, to try and reach faith-based organizations, and a lot of this has been done by volunteers from the community, from different community service organizations coming together to support our cause, and as a grassroots movement within our community to save community members. As of this morning, there's been 26 homicides in Tulare County since January. Also, as of this morning, there's been 31 suicides. This sort of paints the picture of the problem that's in our community and the need for this outreach. I wanted to thank the board this morning for the support of this cause and for the attendance at our conference, and I'd like to extend an invitation to come and visit us at this weekend's Festival of Hope at the Preferred Outlets in Tulare, which we view is a large outreach effort to inform our community and get resources into the hands of the community members. I've also provided the board this morning with some of the outreach materials that we give away at a variety of different events, as well as a music CD, which the song that you heard in the presentation is the first track on the CD, which were all songs that were donated by community artists in order to help get the message of hope out into our community and to get resources into people's hands. So, I wanted to thank the board for recognizing National Suicide Prevention Awareness Week and for just being supportive of this cause.
Thank you, Noah. Would you please come over? I'd like to present this proclamation to you. This proclamation by the Board of Supervisors indicates that between January 1 of 2009 and August 3 of this year, Tulare County has lost 70 lives to suicide. Suicide is the 11th leading cause of all deaths in the United States and the third leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 15 and 24. Each completed suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, loved ones, and by extension, our whole community. Even a single suicide death in Tulare County is unacceptable. So, we commend the task force for the work that they are doing to deal with this particular problem. We realize that the stigma associated with mental illness and suicide tendencies works against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk for suicide from seeking assistance. So, we're hoping to raise the awareness of people realizing that there is hope, there is help, and that they will not remain in the background, but will come forward and seek that help. So, it's our privilege today, the board has signed this proclamation, resolved that the week of September 5th through the 11th is Suicide Prevention Week in Tulare County. Now, if you'll come over and sign. This is an action item. Before we take action, I'd like to invite the board, if they'd like to make any comments, to do so.
You know, I'll just go ahead and commend Noah and the Suicide Prevention Task Force for the work that they do. This is not an easy subject to deal with, but one that certainly needs a lot of attention and as you see in Tulare County, certainly do, seeing 70-plus lives over the last year and a half taken from suicide. And we'd like to think that that is preventable, and I know that that's the goal of the Suicide Prevention Task Force, is to increase awareness and to really help prevent suicides from happening. And so, I look forward to the outreach event that's taking place at the Preferred Outlets on Saturday. I believe it starts at 10:00 a.m., and they've got some great chalk artists going to be there, and it's a great place to increase the awareness for the event and appreciate all the work that you and the Suicide Prevention Task Force do in Tulare County. Thank you.
Difficult subjects to talk about without becoming emotional, so I won't say much than to say that there is hope and getting the word out to families of how to notice and to see what, or friends to see the signs, and there are common signs that people might exhibit before they do this drastic act is very important. So, I commend you on the work you do, and again, very emotional item because it touches families, friends, literally hundreds of people for each incident. So, thank you, Noah.
As Supervisor Cox pointed out, this is something that touches everyone. It's touched my life many times, and the number of 70 or 71 doesn't seem significant, but over the years, you'll find in your lifetime that suicide does touch each and every one of us many times, not a single time, but many times. So, thank goodness for this program and look forward to it being a success.
I support this program greatly because of the loss of seven of my good friends, so I'm behind it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. This is, takes action, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of this item.
I'll second that.
You have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, seconded by Supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes. Vote unanimous? Thank you. Our next item is a proclamation proclaiming September 2010 as Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in Tulare County. And this matter will be presented to us, Dr. Dirksen, I believe you're going to make introductions for us this morning? Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Wordley, members of the board. Thank you for setting aside the time to proclaim the month of September as National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month. As the nation celebrates the 21st anniversary of Recovery Month, we're reminded of how far we've come, acknowledging addiction as a disease state, not simply a flaw in character. And I'm very pleased this morning to introduce to you Ms. Ramona Robertson. Some of you are newer to the board, but Ms. Robertson has actually been a friend of the county and providing services here in addiction treatment for 39 years. So, we're very pleased to have her today to make a few comments about the month.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Chairman Wordley and supervisors, I'm very pleased to be here this morning. I'm very pleased that you have chosen to recognize that recovery happens here in Tulare County, because indeed it does. Some of you here are old enough to remember about 25 years ago, if you'll recall, some of our finest athletes and our celebrities and all of these very well-to-do, successful people were beginning to deteriorate and fall apart. They were losing their contracts, they were losing their jobs, they were losing their families, their homes. Nobody knew why, nobody knew what was happening. Anybody know what was happening then? Do you remember? What was happening was cocaine. Cocaine was taking these people out right and left. Now, none of these people ever dreamed that they were going to lose everything because they used cocaine. I think they probably didn't think about it at all, but if they did think about it, they probably thought, "This feels really good, and I want to do it for a little while, but at some point, I know I'm going to have to put it down and move on." What they didn't realize is cocaine is not a toy that you pick up and put down, and before they knew what had happened, cocaine had turned on them and cocaine was now playing with them, and they weren't moving on, they were going down, and many of them did, as we all recall. Cocaine was followed by a very cheap imitation called methamphetamine. Now, methamphetamine is our equal opportunity drug because now everybody can afford to throw their life away if they want to. Methamphetamine is a long-term high and it's very inexpensive, and many people, many people got on board with methamphetamine. The reason why we have recovery is because most people that want to stop using alcohol and other drugs, they find that they simply cannot do it without treatment. But treatment works and recovery does happen. I'm writing a treasury book right now, a book of treasure stories. You can well imagine, I've been in the field for 30 years and I have a lot of treasure stories in my heart, but I have some special ones, and I'm putting a book together to tell their stories. And one of the stories in that book is a young man that came to us at about age 31, and his parents were drug addicts, and he had started using methamphetamine when he was nine years old. He had never known another world, his whole world was drug addiction and all that goes with it. And when he got to Pine Recovery Center and he saw this other life, he was so excited, he wanted it with everything he had, and he got it. And he left Pine Recovery Center employed. He has a wife now, he has two adorable little girls, he's never going to be a George Soros or a Bill Gates, but his modest income meets their modest needs. They're not in the system anywhere, they're self-sustaining. Have another man that went through Pine Recovery Center about 15 years ago. He was living with his girlfriend, he had a daughter, she had two boys. CWS came in and took their children, and so, they both got into treatment, they wanted their children back. He got clean and sober, she didn't. As a single dad, he raised these children, he took not only his biological daughter, but he took her two boys. One was already in high school, so he didn't have him for very long, but that boy is now in Silicon Valley, he's a computer geek, very successful. The second boy was an honor student all through high school, he's in the Coast Guard now, moving up in rank very quickly. Recently bought a late-model used car, paid cash for it, has $5,000 in the bank. He's never going to be in the system, very successful boy. His daughter, his biological daughter, was a soccer superstar, and she was being scouted by universities and everything, getting a scholarship. In her junior year, she blew her knee out, so she's not doing soccer anymore, but she's coaching soccer in Tulare, and she's going to school to be a nurse. This is recovery happening. This is how recovery looks up close and personal when it happens. I see recovery every day of my life, I bump into it everywhere I go. I see recovery happening here in Walmart, Save Mart, Target, Macy's, walking down Main Street. I can see recovery coming a block away because I know what it looks like. It walks different, it looks different, it talks different. Recovery is something that we can recognize. Couple of weeks ago, was in my doctor's office, and he had a new assistant there, and she happened to be somebody from New Visions. And when she was at New Vision, she went to vocational training. First, she got a GED at Visalia Adult School, and then she went through vocational training, and now she's working as a nurse's office. She married a man that got sober at Pine, we don't encourage that, but love happens, and they're making it work, they're making it work. They have seven children between them, and they're supporting their families now, they're not in the system. When recovery doesn't work, that's a very expensive proposition for this community. I want you to know that this population of people are in the emergency rooms frequently with no insurance. Their children are in neonatal wards at the hospital, the most expensive beds in the hospital. The dads are in prison, the moms are in prison, $25,000 a year, up to $50,000 a year. They're in foster care, they're everywhere, there's sustained housing, everywhere there's a service that's free, they're partakers of that service. But one at a time, one at a time, they're getting recovery. Recovery is happening, it truly does happen here in Tulare County, and I'm very excited that you're recognizing that this morning and declaring September Recovery Happens Month. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ramona. Would you please come forward?
I want to say one other thing, I forgot. I'd like to, we're having an open house as part of this, September 16th, and so, if you haven't gotten flyers, you will be getting flyers, but I want to personally invite each one of you to come if you can. Thank you.
Ramona, thank you for those, you know, for somebody who's been in the field for so many years, I see you have not lost your passion for it, and it's exciting to see that. This is something that we want to celebrate because we don't wish anyone to have to go through these circumstances, but we certainly hope they can come out of it through recovery. And as you say, those are the success stories of our society. And so, at this time, I'd like to present this proclamation declaring September as Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month, and the emphasis is on the word recovery, and signed by the board members, and if you'd come around a side, we'll take a photograph. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And again, this is an action item. I'll turn to my right this time and ask Mr. Ennis, if you'd like to make any comments.
Of course, I'm old enough that I was past a lot of the drug problems when about 10 to 15 years after I was in school and stuff, I saw a lot of people that were afflicted with drugs. I saw people lose businesses, so I mean, it's, and the alcohol problem still continues, some people abuse alcohol, but through these programs, hopefully there is hope for these people. Through things like Judge Roper's Drug and Alcohol Court, there's future. So, congra, thank you so much for all your hard work and thank you for caring enough for these people. I know we do, I do, to see that some of them get their help and can move forward and become another vital part of our society. So, thank you so much.
Brings back memories. In 1978, I was in Aspen, Colorado for New Year's, and being a valley boy, didn't know what cocaine or any of those drugs were. I stayed with some friends who were in the restaurant business, there were waiters and bartenders. So, being a single guy, you go into a place and say, "Can I buy you a drink?", and the gal replies to me more than once, "Do you have a toot?". I'm going, "What in the world's a toot?". Well, I found out from my friends that it was cocaine. And during those times in Aspen, which were very good financially, my friends used to make over $100 a night, being waiters and bartenders, make up to $200 a night. But by the end of the month, they couldn't pay their rent because they were using cocaine. And not only was it an addictive drug, but it was a drug that people tried to get you to use. And a lot of your friends that you knew that used it, they tried to get you to try it. But being a kid, I had severe nosebleeds all my life, and I said, "If I try this, I'll be dead." So, that was my saving grace, but it does bring back memories, and we see methamphetamine now, which I think is more insidious than cocaine. And when we go to drug court, and we see the graduates of drug court, and how many people started with marijuana, but how many of the people in drug court were there biggest in methamphetamine? And it's, I'd say it's 90% of people in drug court are from methamphetamine. So, I salute your program and thank you for all your hard work over these years.
Mr. Cox?
Ramona, while you were talking, I wrote down a word that's meant a lot to me, chain breakers, and you know, there can be chain breakers in families with addiction, and you know, I, having grown up in a home with not knowing that your father wasn't supposed to be inebriated from four o'clock until he went to work the next day, grew up with that, spending, didn't know I wasn't supposed to be in bars at eight and nine and 10 years old, but I can remember drinking a soda at the end of the bar and playing pool while Dad sat at the other end of the bar with his buddies. So, the bright side of this is that there are chain breakers, there are people in families that pull away from that and do not follow some of your stories, actually are examples of that, where you have very successful children that did not want to follow after the footsteps of their parents. So, again, you know, like the item we have before, there is hope for folks that are born into families or in families like that, that you can get assistance for those that are having problems, and also for the family members that are following, they can be chain breakers, they can break that cycle of addiction. And so, I think there's several families, several people I know who are prime examples of that, who have gone on to become very successful people, having grown up in, you know, homes with addiction or homes with problems like that. So, I will see you at your open house. It's not too often that I get a chance to take a shot based on age at another one of my board members, but you know, Supervisor Ennis mentioned that he was a little before alcohol and drugs really took effect in society. Well, he was before drugs and alcohol were even invented, so, thanks, Mike. And I also had another first up here, too, and I actually had, Ramona actually attacked me for my age, saying that I wasn't even alive to remember when cocaine really started taking over society, so that was kind of a first for me, too. But Ramona, thank you very much for your organization and your effort. It takes people like you that are dedicated and committed to recovery and helping those with serious addictions to recover from those illnesses. So, we really thank you for your work and your organization's work, and commend staff as well. I know the Mental Health Board and Alcohol and Drug Programs here at the county work really hard to help people because they care, and I really thank you for all of your efforts, and please commend your staff for the hard work they do, too. Thank you.
Gentlemen, we need to pass a motion to present, make this proclamation. Move for approval. Motion by Mr. Ennis, seconded by Mr. Cox. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for being here today. If you're a part of either one of these, you're invited to stay, but we know you might have other things you need to do. This time, we will take up our public comment period. Anyone wishing to address the board on matters which are within our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda are invited to speak. Yes, Mr. Stanley, come forward, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Stanley S. Simpson, 500 North Santa Fe of Isaya. Suicide and addiction are two terrible, tough things to follow. I'll try to bring a little levity in here and something positive, but I am like any of you on the board, our family and many of the people we know and work with in service, of course, have experienced those type of things, so I commend you for backing the efforts of these people out here. The reason I'm here today is, if you think Ennis is old Pete. We have a big function tomorrow night at Visaya Rawhide Park, which is the best-kept secret in town because simply I forgot to contact the newspapers and all that, so I'm getting out and seeing everybody. I think some of you already know, but what we're doing tomorrow night is, we have invited, and he will be in town tonight, Jim Tunney, National Football League Hall of Fame member, 81 years old, retired, but he's a nationally-known speaker. He's become a personal friend of mine, and I serve on his Jim Tunney Youth Foundation in Monterey, California. In addition to Jim, we will have tomorrow night from Senator, Senator, thank you. Supervisor Ennis's territory, and that is Doug Harvey, who lives at River Island, who was just inducted about six weeks ago into the Baseball Hall of Fame at Cooperstown, New York. We have these two gentlemen coming in for a specific reason. Last year, the fellow I worked with, is very close to me, Max LaPersio, and I reinstituted because it had fallen by the wayside two or three years, the quarterback club. Now, that's another thing, Pete, I'm thinking about a comeback, and I think I'm looking pretty good here, so, you know. Anyway, last year, we resurrected the quarterback club and had the Visaya Area Schools and the College of the Sequoias, and it worked out pretty well. The most important function that it provides is every Thursday morning at 6:30 at Visaya Rawhide Park in the new restaurant and all that, we honored each team, and each coach brought a player of the week. And at first, we didn't exactly know how well this would take off, but when you begin to see how the young men were really tickled despite the hour and the you begin to see how the young men were really tickled despite the hour in the morning to receive a plaque or a certificate, and then at the end get watches for all that they'd done, it really worked out well. So, this past couple of months, we have gotten together, went in with the coaches, and we've expanded it. We hope it'll work. I know it will. The only problem will be transportation. But we have Mount Whitney, El Diamante, Golden West, and Redwood, the four public high schools in Visaya. We have CVC, Central Valley Christian involved. They were last year. Visaya Christian was involved last year, but they don't have enough students for a football team. The College of the Sequoias is going to be heavily involved this year. And we have reached out, and Woodlake, Exeter, Lindsey, and Farmersville.
That's all right. Keep going.
Are also going to be involved. Doesn't bother me. I've been here longer than you guys. Anyway, so, we've got all of them involved. And tomorrow night, we're having all the teams come in. The coaches have agreed to cut their practices short at five o'clock and get the kids showered and over to Rawhide Park. So, we expect five to seven hundred players from all the schools, not just varsity, on down to freshmen. This personal note, I have, I have been allowed to get to know these coaches the past year or so, some I already knew, like Coach Yavasell at Redwood, but me, a Ranger, right? But anyway, I've gotten to know them. I was on campuses yesterday when I got back from Los Angeles. I can assure you that on the hugely plus side of life, these gentlemen are doing one whale of a job for these young men. So, I think two of you are going to be here. If you need something, you can call me at the office today or get Max. I ask that any of you that could come out tomorrow night. At six o'clock, Mr. Tunney will be giving his message, which is team, 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 to the kids in the stands. And then at seven o'clock, Wendy and I and Buckman Mitchell are hosting a dinner and so forth up there where, where Mr. Tunney and Mr. Harvey will give a talk. So, anyway, it's a very positive thing. Phil, let's tie it in a little bit. I'm starting to get to you sooner. I missed the meeting last Thursday. It's age, baby. I'm telling you, it's age. But the heart's there. Thank you very much for listening to me, and have a good meeting.
Thank you, Stan. Appreciate you being here this morning.
Thanks, Stan.
Anybody else wishing to address this in our public comment? Mr. Pilligard?
Good morning. Neil Pilligard, Tulare County General Services, Parks and Recreation. I'm here before the board to thank you for your support of our tournament coming up this weekend. It's very exciting. We have a full field. We actually have an overfull field of a full hundred and fifty players. The majority of players coming to our tournament are from out of town, so they'll be bringing additional tourism dollars to our county. The exciting thing is when they go home, they'll be real pleased with what they see. The two courses, the Perry Championship and the Perry Outback, are a couple of the best courses in the San Joaquin Valley. And so, as they go home, they'll be bringing other players from out of town to get hotel rooms, to buy meals, to spend money here and help our economy. It's because we want to continue your participation in the sport, we've brought discs for each of you. We want to see you to continue to be involved.
Mr. Cox might want to pass on that. I'm not sure.
Oh, no, no. Chairman Worthy, I've been flinging the disc or putting and driving quite well.
My recollection was that the last time he tried to swing one of these, he ended up in the hospital for a period of time. So, I'm glad.
Actually, the last time, sir, was yesterday morning. He was out with us. We were interviewed by Channel Twenty-Six.
He warmed up this time, apparently. I'm glad.
Saw him on Channel Twenty-Six.
He did, he did call in advance and ask for pointers, how to avoid ending up in the hospital. I said, you know, warm-up is the key, a little bit of stretching, and obviously, he's here this morning, so there were no injuries.
Very good. Okay.
Frisbee elbow, that is now he's pretty good.
Mr. Chairman, Pilligard forgot to mention that when we did our putt on camera, that I made my putt and he missed.
Ah, you're killing me. One exciting thing, another project that we've had at Moonee Grove Park is our Recharge Basin. And because we had an exceptionally wet winter, and the water run is running long, we got through our LAFCO process. We are a member of Tulare Irrigation's district. So, we're putting water in the basin for the disc golfers, both for a while and to grab a few of their discs.
Very good.
Well, maybe so they could cool off.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Neil. Appreciate you being here and thanks for that information.
Thank you.
Any other public comments this morning? Yes, Tina, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning.
Came all, came down off the hill.
I came down off the hill.
Thanks for being here.
Um, I was here.
Please introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tina Truel, Forest Supervisor, Sequoia National Forest, and Giant Sequoia National Monument. I gave a presentation to the board a month ago regarding the Giant Sequoia National Monument Draft Environment Impact Statement and the release that was going to be subsequent to the meeting. I have the document. It got released August sixth for a ninety-day comment period, which closes November third. This document took about three and a half years in the making. It is a draft, and so wanted to make sure I gave it to the board for your review. It is electronic. Also, for those who don't want to read, eight hundred pages of an environmental impact statement, two hundred pages of a management plan, and three hundred pages of appendices. There is a twelve-to-sixteen-page executive summary for those who would like to read it. But I wanted to make sure I gave a copy to the board, and thank you for all your support, in particular Supervisor Sheedah, as well as Supervisor Ennis, for attending all the collaborative meetings we have for about two years. So, just wanted to make sure I give you a copy.
Smaller than our general plan.
It is. We tried.
It's not smaller, it's a smaller type.
That's what it is. And also, we'll be back in about a month to deal with the Film Commission Agreement that we do have finally signed. But gotta make sure I get, actually, I have all the signatures, but Eric is not here today. And so, I'll get with Eric, and we'll be back at another particular time to sign it. So.
Thank you. I think it's on our agenda for today, actually.
Is it on the agenda? Still on the agenda?
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is. So, I'm staying. I'm not going back up to the hill. Okay.
Well, you don't have to, but you're welcome to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being here this morning.
Thanks, Tina.
Anybody else wishing to address during public comment period? Seeing and hearing no one, we will close the public comment period and then bring it back to the board for Board Supervisors Matters. Mr. Vandepoel?
I just was going to make mention again of the Suicide Prevention Task Force Festival of Hope that's going to be taking place this weekend, Saturday, ten a.m. at the preferred outlets in Tulare. I sure hope to see a great turnout. There's going to be some great artists there showcasing their chalk art skills. I hope I don't have to draw. I just hopefully have to judge. And it should be a wonderful event. And then, since we don't have a meeting next week, I will also make mention of the nine-eleven, September eleventh, blood drive that's happening in Tulare. It's happening on nine-eleven at ten a.m. in Tulare at the Veterans Memorial Building on Tulare Avenue. So, I look forward to seeing a great turnout there. They passed their record last year, and I think they're going to shoot to pass the record again this year. So.
Very good.
Hopefully, we'll see another great event. Thank you.
Chicago?
Thank you. Two things. First, I wanted to notify the public that the Step Up Youth Activities Grant awards are out for publication. September twenty-third at two p.m., there will be a meeting here in this board chambers for those wishing to apply for those grants, which the board will reimburse a hundred thousand dollars in funds provided by the gang administration budget, twenty thousand dollars for each supervisory district to youth, or programming that provides activities for youth, stressing at-risk youth. So, the Grant Shop on the twenty-third is a must-attend. If you do not sign in, you are not eligible to apply for a grant. So, very important that folks know about that meeting. Something that everyone has heard of, there was a tragic event Sunday at one of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, which I attend. I do attend in a different building and did not know Bishop Sander. But something interesting has happened, as quite often when events like this happen, the scam artists do come out of the closet and try to get as much money out of good-willing people as they can. The family and the church would like people to know that there is only one family trust that has been set up for the family, and it's called the Sander Family Trust. And funds or donations or letters can be sent to P.O. Box three-three-two-eight, Visaya, California, nine-three-two-seven-eight, or they can be hand-delivered to Citizens Business Bank, which is five hundred West Main Street in Visaya. So, do not be taken advantage because of your willingness to assist the family in their time of need. There are online, already within hours, there were online opportunities for you to donate. Some of those online opportunities have reached the tens of thousands of dollars, and there's no guarantee that one penny of that will go to Mrs. Sander or her seven, or six sons. So, don't be duped because of your willingness to be kind-hearted and generous. There is only one fund set up by the family at this time.
Thanks for that information. Mr. Sheedah?
Friday, August twentieth, I attended the California Partnership for the San Joaquin Valley. And that meeting was held at the Heritage Center in Tulare. And at that meeting, our rail committee made a presentation in front of the partnership, and the partnership voted to support the efforts of Tulare County of keeping the Eastside Rail, Short-Haul Rail line intact, and to expand the business possibilities. Since that period of time, we received word yesterday that San Joaquin Valley Railroad, or Rail America, is pulling the railroad tracks somewhere around the area of Terabella. This does change the direction to some degree of what the TCAG is trying to accomplish, but it is not the end of what we're trying to accomplish. We have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday at ten a.m. at the Ag Commissioner's Office, and that is when we receive the report of the consultant that we hired on the value of that rail and the economic feasibility into the future. It's kind of interesting to me that they start pulling rail on Monday before TCAG can receive the report on which they will base their decision on going forward with buying that rail that they're pulling. So, it's kind of, kind of ironic, but I can assure you that our rail efforts have not ended just because of this event. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Ennis?
Yeah, tomorrow evening, Alan, and Sheedah and I will be attending the ballpark to present a proclamation to Doug Harvey, who is inducted into the Hall of Fame, Baseball Hall of Fame as a major league umpire. And I know Doug real well. He lives up in the Springville area. And I think the reason he came to Porterville is because of Monty Moore used to put the golf tournaments on every year, and he came up to the golf course and liked the area so well that he moved up there. But great guy. He was a customer of ours down at Fagerby when I was there. So, what a, what a great guy and what a fitting person to be inducted into the Hall of Fame. Also, tomorrow at ten o'clock in Porterville at the Library Building, we'll be doing our Loop Outreach Meeting for the Loop Bus, and we'll be talking to the people of the Porterville and Southeastern Tulare County over possibilities of getting more people on board with the Loop Bus and, and trying to educate them on who can and who can't use it. And hopefully, that'll be a good meeting, too. Last week, I had my meeting at the Upper Thule on Friday, where we brought in the Highway Patrol, the County Roads, County Fire, Cal Fire. We also had the U.S. Forest Service. Tina was there. And we had a pretty good group of people. I'd say thirty-five or forty from Alpine, Sequoia Crest, Bonnarosa, Camp Nelson, and listened to their concerns. And I've got some pretty good feedback from them. And I think they really appreciate it. And I'm going to do this every year on an ongoing basis, is try to bring everybody together up there. I think everybody thought it was a good meeting. Also, last week, we had a RAC meeting, which is Resource Advisory Committee, and we're going to start accepting grants. Our next meeting will be on the twenty-third. And hopefully, we'll get people out to present grants to us. That will be held in Bakersfield. Although, if we, if we don't get any grants this year, or don't, you know, pack to put any money out, we don't have to spend this money till two thousand and twelve. So, there is, there is some urgency to get these grants going for this year, hopefully. But if we don't, we still don't lose the money. So, that's all I have this morning.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add something. There's something very unique about Doug Harvey, excepted to the Baseball Hall of Fame. Doug is a professional umpire. So, I think that's quite an accomplishment.
The only thing I wanted to say this morning was that it's on our consent calendar item, so I just, I thought it was appropriate to bring attention to it, otherwise, we would not. And that is that the bid opening results for the Betty Drive Avenue Three Twelve Realignment Improvement Project Phase Two A from Road Sixty-Eight to Road Eighty, the engineer's estimate for this project was four million, two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. The actual low bid was three million, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, basically eight hundred thousand dollars under the engineer's estimate. And we keep ratcheting down these engineer's estimates because it's based upon previous bids, and they keep falling below our engineer's estimate. So, it's a great time for construction. If you have the funds to do it, now is the time. And so, it's a great opportunity for our measure, our dollars, to be utilized to, to take advantage of these opportunities. That's all I have today. At this time, we'll go take up our consent calendar. And on the consent calendar, item number eight is off agenda. Are there any items that members wish to handle separately?
I have one. I'd like to pull item number thirteen, please.
Item thirteen. All right. Anything else? That's an untimed item. Thirty-three's untimed.
Yeah, I'd move for approval.
Chairman, you want to include the addendum in the consent calendar?
Oh, yes, including the addendum also. Excuse me. Yes, we have an addendum item.
Okay, move for approval, less items eight, less item thirteen, and approve the addendum, too.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Ennis, seconded by Mr. Sheedah. Please cast your votes. And the votes are unanimous. Item thirteen?
You know, I just wanted to pull item number thirteen. I think this is great that we're going to be improving these various parks in our unincorporated communities. I would just ask staff to direct CSET and the organizations conducting these improvements, just to see if there's any way that we can proactively post signs encouraging people to take care of these newly updated and renovated bathrooms and facilities. You know, the, these parks are really the center of a lot of these communities. And to do, make all these improvements, and to have them destroyed a couple of weeks later, a couple of months, or within a year later, it's a real shame. So, you know, we're spending a good chunk of grant monies here to better these parks. I'd just like to see us make sure that we do put some effort out there to make sure that these areas stay nice. So, I just wanted to make that comment. And with that, I do approve of this item.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Vandepoel, seconded by Mr. Cox. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous for approval. That will take us to our untimed items. Item number thirty-three is off calendar today, and we'll take up item number thirty-four, a request from the County Administrative Office to consider modify as needed and approve responses to the Claret County Grand Jury, two thousand nine, two thousand ten final report. Good morning.
Good morning. Kristen Bennett, Assistant County Administrative Officer. The two thousand nine-ten Grand Jury has issued their final report, and responses from your board is requested on ten reports. Your board previously approved two interim reports, and the remaining eight are part of this agenda item. This morning, you were provided with the revised draft for the Tevison Report. Pages four and five were updated. For all reports, respondents must address each finding stating either agreement or disagreement. And in the response, those items that are partially agreed just required minor clarification, and we've made that clarification. The response must also address each recommendation stating if it's been implemented, if further analysis is needed, and the timeframe for that analysis, or if the recommendation will not be implemented. I will review each of the draft responses for your consideration. Please let me know if you have any questions or modifications. The first one, county missing opportunity to collect revenue. The report contains twenty findings. The draft response finds agreement or partial agreement for sixteen of the findings. Four findings are disagreed. There are five recommendations, and all will be implemented. The Failure to Plan Report includes fifteen findings. The response notes agreement or partial agreement with all fifteen. There are seventeen recommendations. Five will be implemented, and two will not. For the Inmate Clothing Report, there are seventeen findings and three recommendations. The draft states agreement or partial agreements with all the findings, and all three recommendations have been implemented. The medical and medication problems in the jails report had thirty findings. The draft states agreement or partial agreement with seventeen findings, and thirteen findings are in disagreement. There are twelve recommendations. Seven recommendations have been implemented. One needs further study, which will be completed in six months, and four recommendations will not be implemented. The Pro Per Inmates Report had eighteen findings. The draft states agreement or partial agreement with all eighteen. There are three recommendations have been implemented. There are three recommendations, and all have been implemented. The next draft is the Speed Traps in Tulare County. This report contains six findings. The draft response finds agreement or partial with all six. There are five recommendations. Three have been implemented and two will not be implemented. The Tevisston Citizens Deserve Better Report had 21 findings. One finding is in agreement. 15 findings are not in the purview of your board. Three findings are disagreed, and two findings do not include sufficient information to respond. There are eight recommendations. One will not be implemented as stated, and the other seven are not in the purview of your board. Would like to note that the Government 101 Course was mentioned in the Tevisston Report. This is the education course that was presented previously for special districts, boards, and commissions. And Government Course 102 is planned for this December. And again, these special districts, boards, and commissions will be invited and encouraged to participate. The final draft response is titled, Who Is Protecting the Children in Tulare County? It contains 11 findings. The draft response finds agreement or partial agreement with eight findings and disagreement with three findings. There are six recommendations. Four have been implemented, and two will not be implemented. It's requested that you approve the draft responses with the changes noted and any clerical corrections that are needed, and authorize the chairman to sign the response letters. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
One quick one. You know, Kristen, I noticed in years past, we've received, you know, we have to respond to several. They're not in our purview, I mean, the special districts and the such. It seemed like there's fewer this year than there have been in years past. So the message might be getting across that we don't have any control over all of these special districts, and the water districts, and the sewer districts, and this and that district. And they're required to respond on their own? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Responses are submitted to the presiding judge and also to the clerk for record-keeping.
And I know the Grand Jury's report always comes out. Is there ever an effort made to get the responses out beyond that? Because every year, I get that copy in the mail or in the newspaper. We always get it. Is there ever an effort made to get our responses out?
Not to my knowledge. I think that the Grand Jury, the previous Grand Jury will report it. The council can respond. But the responses go to the presiding judge and are submitted to the state, but there's never a local presentation of those.
Okay, thank you.
County Council?
There is no requirement that the Grand Jury publish the responses, other than the placement with eventually the state archive, and they are kept by the court. Last year, there was a request by one of the local agencies for the Grand Jury to publish electronically the responses with their reports, and that was denied on the grounds of expense. Apparently, there's a cost associated with that. There is nothing to stop your board from, because the Grand Jury reports are in all of your libraries. You could ask that the responses be lodged with those reports, but it is not legally required for the Grand Jury to do anything other than eventually it goes to the state archives.
Well, thank you for indulgement. It just, it seems that there's these accusations made, and you never get to hear what the response is. And that's left hanging in the public quiet often. So there's sometimes a very positive report by the Grand Jury, and every once in a while, an inquisitive negative, and that negative taste stays with little or no response. So that's all I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Innis, seconded by Mr. Cox. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Thank you, Kristen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Something else occurred to me. Your responses are on your board's webpage. They are part of an agenda item. There is nothing to prevent you from having, I think there's a section on your webpage which has notices and events, and you could certainly move them to that page to make it easier for people to find, or that section on your webpage.
I was thinking that, too. I think our website would be an excellent opportunity to put those side by side. Alright, item number 35 is a request from Human Resources and Development regarding ratification of elections. Good morning. Good news today, I understand?
We have good news this morning. I'm Rhonda Schustrom with Human Resources and Development. And the item before you this morning is a request to your board to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Government Lawyers Association, GLAW, and also the Physicians Professional Association of Tulare County Physicians, which is PATCOP. Both groups have ratified the agreements, and they come before your board for formal action today. Both groups, and in the agreements, were able to meet the criteria of providing concessions, givebacks to the county, and meeting our target financial needs that we requested, and being partners this year along with the county, with the departments, and with the associations, and everyone sharing in the pain, so to speak, that we are in in the economic times. Both groups will be taking, PATCOP will be taking a 1.92% reduction and will not be getting any furlough time as part of their continuing agreement. They did something very similar last year. GLAW is taking the 1.92% reduction for a portion of their members. And other members will be taking a larger reduction, equal to approximately 5%, for those who will be getting past step or merit increases that were due this past year. That is the amendment to the agreement that was brought in to the item that was previously submitted. As I said, they have ratified, and we are in agreement with the way in which we will implement the reductions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments by members? Now, this concludes all of our negotiations with all of our bargains?
This concludes all of the negotiations, except for IHSS, the In-Home Supportive Services, continuing to have discussions with that group.
Very good. And I want to thank the Department for its working with, and also for the various representatives of our employees for coming to, be able to work together to come to these needed conclusions. As you say, these are difficult times, but we've gotten about it in different sorts of ways, but the bottom line was still the bottom line, and we've been able to achieve that. So thank you very much for the hard work from your department, and for all the employees for their willingness to share in this difficult times.
Well, thank you, and we'd like to thank the board for their support. I'm happy to say we are concluded in this round, but we will be back again soon, since these are all primarily one-year agreements.
Yes. Very good. Are there any questions or comments? Does not entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Innis and seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item is number 36, a request from the Human Resources and Development to accept and approve the Health Plan Advisory Group recommendation to continue to offer following plans. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Evelyn Smithers. I'm the Administrative Services Manager at Human Resources and Development. And I am here today to present the agenda item regarding the health insurance plan for 2011 plan year and the wellness program. We are asking that your board accept and approve the joint recommendation of the Human Resources and Development Department and the Health Plan Advisory Group to continue to offer the Blue Cross PPO plans through the shared administration model provided by the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority with a 12.8% renewal rate, and the Kaiser Permanente Plan with an 8.2% renewal rate. Tulare County currently offers its Blue Cross PPO plans as self-funded through the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority. The SJVIA is a joint powers agreement between the County of Tulare and the County of Fresno. At the SJVIA meeting on August 20th, they adopted the renewal rates for the County of Tulare's Blue Cross plans with a 12.8% increase. Additional quotes were secured through Gallagher Benefit Services, our benefits consultant, for a Blue Shield fully insured plan, and that came in at a 25.7% increase over our current plan. We also secured a bid for a Tulare County self-insured option without the SJVIA for an administrative services only or an ASO plan with Blue Shield, which came in at 15.5% over the current Blue Cross plans. This independent ASO plan would cost Tulare County about $500,000 more annually in fixed cost than if we remain with the SJVIA, which in comparison saved us approximately $900,000 from the EIA in the previous year for the current. The 12.8% proposed increase is well within the range of premium increases in the industry in 2011. The ancillary products of dental, vision, life, and long-term disability are on multi-year contracts that are not up for renewal this year, and they continue to mitigate the premiums proposed rate increase. Instead of 12.8%, the composite rate would actually be about 11.7%. The County's Health Plan Advisory Group, which is comprised of employee representatives from the county's various bargaining units and unrepresented employees, has reviewed these proposals, and they concur in our recommendations, both for the health plan rates and for the proposed wellness plan. Which brings me to the second part of the agenda item, the Wellness Plan. We are asking that your board approve the Wellness Plan for Tulare County that was authorized and will be funded through the SJVIA. The County of Tulare's portion of funding for claims mitigation and wellness for calendar year 2010 is $84,000 in the SJVIA budget. We are asking that your board adopt the proposed wellness components as follows. An individual health risk assessment, including biometric testing and follow-up. This may take up to 35 minutes per participating employee. And if you're like me, I didn't know what biometric meant, so I actually looked it up. And that meant gathering of height and weight, blood pressure, blood work that would look at cholesterol, glucose, triglycerides, those kinds of things. The SJVIA has allocated sufficient funds for up to 1,000 employees to participate in this voluntary program. This program will be carried out over an extended period so as not to significantly impact county operations. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. The SJVIA authorized offering mobile mammography screenings to aid in early detection of breast cancer for women over the age of 40. A mobile unit would be brought onsite to perform the procedure. The results of the screening would then be sent to the employee's physician. The SJVIA allocated $10,000 for this calendar year, which would cover approximately 100 screenings. Kaiser Permanente offers very similar programs for their participants. Human Resources proposes to obtain quotes from multiple vendors for the services to be performed. And since no contract will be over $100,000, if your board approves this program, Human Resources will work to award contracts through the purchasing department. In addition, the Tulare County Wellness Program would include onsite influenza vaccinations funded by risk management. Any unused portion of the claims mitigation money could either be used in concert with the County of Fresno on long-term strategies as yet to be determined, or they could be allocated for Tulare County's use in the future. In conclusion, we are recommending that your board approve accepting the SJVIA Health Plan from Blue Cross with a 12.8% premium increase for 2011, and approve the Kaiser Permanente HMO with an 8.2% renewal rate. And we're actually adding a new low-cost HMO option that would increase deductible and copays, but it would retain the 2010 rates. And to approve the Wellness Plan for Tulare County that was authorized and funded by the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority. I will try to answer your questions.
Thank you, Evelyn. Are there any questions?
I do just have one question. You made a general comment about industry averages of premium increases. What were the averages, the average range?
I do know that the EIA came in with an 11.7.
Okay, so...
And they actually bought down, theirs was 15%, and they bought it down with their reserves to 11.7.
Well, and, you know, I would just make a comment, because this is, as a representative for Tulare County on the SJVIA, I was very inquisitive in the whole process, just because when you see a 12.8% increase, which actually was higher prior to our direction to staff to wait for some more data to come in. You know, if you look at these increases, they're projections based on data that's come before us. And because the SJVIA is a relatively new organization, I think, is it not even a year yet? So it's not even a year old yet. And so we're basing our projections for the upcoming year based on nine months of data or eight months of data?
Seven.
Seven, okay, perfect. I'm working my way down. And so we're basing the projections on that data. And, you know, once we get a full year's data, we'll be able to be even more accurate, and hopefully, it'll be an even lower number. But one thing I've learned in the whole process is that the reason that rates go up isn't because of the providers necessarily raising their costs. It's because of the fact that the claims data that comes in from the employees raises the need for additional costs to be paid by all employees. So those employees that are unhealthy are kind of making every employee pay more. So it's beneficial to the county to take proactive measures like the health fare, like these cancers, breast cancer screenings, and like the flu shots and everything else, to make sure that our employees stay healthy, because that's going to benefit the entire employee base so that we have lower premium increases in the future. So it behooves county employees to encourage each other to be healthy and try to live healthy lives, because not only will it help your heart and your actual body, it'll help your pocketbook as well. So I would just like to pass that message on, because it was something that I have been learning and really kind of pushing to help keep our premiums lower in the future.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, Mr. Sheed?
What was the difference between our 12.8% increase versus Fresno's increase?
Increase for Fresno was actually a little bit lower. They had a better claims experience showing.
The reason I ask that question, I want to reemphasize what Supervisor Vanderpoel just mentioned, is the rates that we pay in the increase in premiums is a direct result of the amount of claims that we have. And at this point in time, it appears that Fresno County employees are in a little better shape than Tulare County employees.
That's true.
So I believe that's why this preventative part of the insurance is extremely important for the employees of Tulare County to take advantage of the services, and therefore, as Supervisor Vanderpoel pointed out, decreases the increase in the insurance premium. The one thing I want to also mention is the fact that Tulare County, several years ago, the Board of Supervisors elected to pay for the insurance, the $1,000 deductible for every employee in Tulare County. So this increase, a lot of it is borne strictly by the county general fund versus the employee. So even during hard times, health costs still go up, but that's something the county has made a decision that we would absorb, so...
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Does not entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Innis, and seconded by Mr. Sheed, and it was passed unanimously. I did want to make, was a quick comment, just as a reminder, it's always nice to put things in context. But last year, we were able to provide our employees with this health insurance of no increase from the previous year. So we have a fairly substantial pay increase this year, but when you look at the last two years, it's been a pretty reasonable increase overall. Because I remember in last year, most other public entities were seeing tremendous increases in their costs going up, when we had a flat, no increase at all. So it's always good to keep in mind that, I know we look at today, but there's yesterday, too, that has helped us. Okay, thank you very much for being here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I did want to give a little extra credit in regard to the flu shots provided for employees. Risk management does pay for the vaccine, but the Health and Human Services Agency coordinates the clinics and acts... coordinates the clinics and actually does the administration, so we work in partnership with them.
Very good, thank you. Brings to item number thirty-seven, a request from the Auditor Controller to approve the rate of taxation of the state and county for fiscal year two thousand and ten, eleven. Good morning, Rita.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Board members, Jean and Ms. Belsling. I'm Rita Woodard, I'm the County Auditor Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, and this is the time fixed by law to levy the rate of taxation for state and county purposes for the fiscal year twenty-ten through twenty-eleven. We recommend this board approve the rate of taxation of the state and county for the fiscal year be collected upon the taxable property of the County of Tulare, State of California, at the rate of one dollar per one hundred of assessed valuation, as shown on the schedules attached to your agenda item as allowed by law. We also recommend this board order the tax rates, as shown on schedules A, B, C, and D, be levied and directed to be collected upon each one hundred assessed valuation of the taxable property of the several school districts and special districts of said county, for raising the necessary amount to pay the principal and interest on bonds and for special purpose of said districts as allowed by law. This morning, you received a revised Schedule C, which now includes the Tulare District Healthcare Bond Tax Rates that their board passed on Wednesday, August twenty-fifth, for their issues A and B for the current year. We didn't have them until they passed that, okay. And it is for information there, because they set that rate. We further recommend this board approve and accept the statement of valuation of the property in this county, as compiled by the county auditor and filed with this board. For your information, last year's current tax rolls totaled three hundred and thirty-two million, six hundred and fourteen, nine hundred and ninety-seven million dollars. Would move that, to approve that, we'd appreciate it, and we can get on with our collection efforts.
Just, I might add, and this, of course, is more formality than anything, because the valuation is based upon Prop thirteen, the one dollar per hundred was established by the voters of California nineteen seventy-eight. And the only thing that changes is the valuation of property, whether it goes up or goes down, and as you say, the special districts and so forth that pass bonds that then are paid for by, and the people that vote for those to approve them.
That's correct. Those are the ones we calculate.
One quick thing, I'm going to piggyback on what you had to say, Mr. Chair, about the success of Measure R. I said on the Measure I Oversight Committee for Colleges Sequoias, and the amount of work that's been able to be done with those dollars today far exceeds what had been planned even during, you know, planning for Measure I, so the work at COS has been able to be expanded with those bond money, so it's been a very successful time, so those districts, you know, COS, I say unified, and in my district, Quea Delta in particular, have really benefited from having those bond measures in place, and have been able to do a lot more with the dollars that were approved.
And one thing, too, that the districts do that taxpayers sometimes get confused on is there will be several issues for a bond. The voters ask for a bond measure, but then they don't sell all of it at once, they sell it as they need the money, and so it appears on the tax bill through two or three times as issue A, issue B, but it's because they aren't selling those bond issues until they need the money.
That's a good point, Rita, I appreciate you making that, because I know that it's always kind of a surprise to me, I look at my tax bill and I go, whoa, and I thought my property values were dropping, how come my tax bill's going up? But oftentimes, as you say, it's the sale of a bond that continues to add to that cost, and so until it gets sold, it isn't actually levied against our taxes. Any other questions or comments? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Cox.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ennis, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Thank you for being here, Rita.
Thank you.
Brings to item number thirty-eight, a presentation given by the Health and Human Services Agency regarding the transition of clinic services from Tulare County to the Tulare Regional Medical Center in Lindsay and Tulare. Good morning.
Hi, I'm Karen Elliott. I am the Division Manager over Health Operations for the Health and Human Services Agency, and this morning, together with Steve Debuski from Tulare Regional Medical Center, we're here to discuss the transition of clinical services in the Tulare and Lindsay clinics from Tulare County over to Tulare Regional. The county closed the operations of their clinics March first, two thousand and nine. At that time, there was about thirteen thousand patients at the Hillman Center and thirty-four hundred patients at the Lindsay Center. Of that, about sixteen to seventeen percent of those patients were TCMS patients. Although the county closed its operations, they did recognize its commitment to continue to provide healthcare services to the TCMS patients.
Karen, would you mind one time just telling the people who are listening what TCMS is?
That was, I'm sorry, that was my next lead, and I apologize. The TCMS stands for Tulare County Medical Services. It is the county's healthcare program for the medically indigent. We, as a county, any patient that is eligible under that program is provided medical and health services through either county physicians or any contracted facility or physician. And at the time that we closed our clinics, it was a priority that we found the providers or contracted providers to continue to provide services to TCMS. And with this transition to Tulare Regional Medical Center, they worked in collaboration with us and did contract us to continue to provide services to these patients. At the time we closed, we sent out two separate mailings to all of our clinic patients. In there, we went over the, advised them of the clinics and services that were available within a twenty-mile radius, gave them the opportunity to be advised of who they were and choose who they might want to go to or remain with the county clinic services. We sent out medical release forms at that time, so if they sent them into our county or to our clinic, we would make copies of their records and send it to their physician or facility of choice. So all patients were allowed the opportunity to select another provider. We looked at the data from the last year of operations for the Tulare site compared to the two thousand and ten year for Tulare Regional. What we see is that Tulare Regional is fulfilling in terms of providing services to more patients than we did when we were running the clinic in Tulare County. They continue to provide even more services, or a greater percentage of services to the TCMS clients also. They are doing this with basically the same amount of primary care FTEs. They have around six and a half physicians that are full-time at their clinic, but I think what's more important to point out is that they continue to be able to bring in some specialty providers. Tulare County is a medically underserved area, it is difficult to recruit any physicians to this area, let alone if they do come here, have them accept services from those that are maybe medical or indigent. So with them bringing in more specialty providers under contract and allowing us to seek services through them, it benefits the county. The Lindsay site has seen a drop of non-TCMS provider visits, but they do continue to see a good number of our TCMS clients. Again, I think this is important, because they can continue to receive services in the area that they're from without having to travel outside of their area to the Visalia or Farmersville Clinic or the Tulare Peds Clinic to receive these services. And they have about the same amount of primary care providers that we had when we were open as under the county. When you looked at the combined numbers, it looks very good. I think that there's about a twelve percent increase in visits that Tulare Regional will provide to clients this year as compared to what Tulare County was able to provide in two thousand and eight. I'm going to invite Steve Debuski now, he is from Tulare Regional Medical Center, and he is going to discuss the continued growth and progress of their facilities.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Debuski.
Morning. Steve Debuski, Tulare Regional Medical Center, it's my pleasure to be in front of you again. About eighteen months ago, the chairman of the Tulare Board, Hospital Board, and Dr. Hamud Kumar and the CEO, Sean Baluki, came to this board and made a proposition and a commitment to the board to take over the Lindsay and Hillman Healthcare Center. The commitment was that we would continue to serve the medically underserved patients in those clinics, and more importantly than that, we had a commitment to serve the underserved patients in Tulare County. Approximately a month later, the county decided to close the clinics and award those clinics to Tulare District Hospital. At the same time, the district hospital changed its name to Tulare Regional Medical Center to affirm that commitment to the community, that indeed we were serving the underserved of Tulare County. It's interesting, when the county left Lindsay, we spent approximately a hundred thousand dollars in equipment, paint, roof, and did it in one weekend. County closed on a Thursday, we opened on a Monday with no discontinuing of service. Hillman was a little different story, there needed to be some major upgrades. The county paid for the majority of those because they were life safety issues, but we still spent approximately three hundred thousand dollars improving the looks of that building and equipment. Subsequent to that, we've leased additional space at Hillman. In the back of the building, we leased a space for Women's Health Clinic, and the area formerly known as the Pharmacy Wing will be leased probably in the next thirty days for pharmacy and education classrooms. In addition, in the year since we made the proposal to the board, we've opened a clinic in Kingsburg, and we will be opening a clinic in Woodville, probably middle of October. So if there's no other questions.
Steve, I have a question, is there any concern about the drop in the total visits at the Lindsay Clinic? I was a little surprised to see that reduction.
Steve, we feel that the county did a very good job about promoting the closures of the county clinics, and those patients transitioned to the Visalia Clinic. We're seeing those drops in numbers coming from the managed care patient, not the underserved patient, so they're gradually coming back, but it's slow.
But the commitment still to remain in that location is strong by your, very good, thank you. Other questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, I just commend the Tulare Regional Medical Center for the work that they've done to really create a facility that people go to. I mean, I went to the grand opening of that facility, and I was just amazed from the transition from the county to the Tulare Regional Medical Center, being in operation there. You guys have done a great job making that a great building and a facility where people go and they, you know, feel like they're in a top-of-the-line facility, receiving care no matter what portion of the population they're coming from, so it's, you know, it's a really great thing, what you guys have done there, and I'm glad to see that your patient volumes have continued, remained steady or increased, in many cases, down in Tulare. So thank you for your services, and I'm really glad to hear that you're expanding to the unincorporated areas where services really do not exist. It's sure great to see the Regional Medical Center acknowledging the need for those services in those areas, so thank you very much for doing that.
For the record, Kingsburg actually is incorporated.
No, no, I'm talking about Woodville and, you know.
Very good.
I did pass out a brochure with the list of our specialties, and I would like to tell you that since that brochure was developed, we've added vascular surgery for dialysis access program for surgeons who are now coming to the clinic. We've added neurology, we've added urology, and we've added psychosocial services, so there's a lot going on at Hillman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to receive the presentation?
Make the motion that we receive the presentation.
Motion by Mr. Vanderpoel. Seconded by Mr. Ennis, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous, I'm told. All right, we'll go to item number thirty-nine. Thirty-nine is a presentation given by the Resource Management Agency regarding changes and progress in the Planning Branch. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm going to go ahead and hand out a portion of this presentation, give it to Michelle here to pass out, have a few copies for the public. And just start out by saying thank you for the opportunity to talk about some of the changes and improvements that have been going on in the Planning Branch over the last few months.
Would you do us the favor of introducing yourself, please, so the world wide web will know who's speaking?
I will. Let me see if I can get connected here, and then I'll start out the visual portion. My name's Ben Kimball, I'm the Chief Planner for the Project Review Division of the Planning Branch of the Resources Management Agency. I've been with the department for about five months. Purpose of this presentation is to give an update of the status of our division and show some of the improvements that we've made, show you the results of some of those improvements, and talk about some of our future, present and future goals. Just want to introduce our team to you, so you know who we're talking about. Got a picture of myself up on the board, the chief planner. In our division, we have two Planner 3s, Charlotte Bruceuelas and John Heiser. We also have seven Planner 2s, Andrew Pacheco, April Hill, Nick Hahn, Dana Metlin, Michael Washington, Jennifer Munn, and Samantha Franks. These guys really deserve the credit for a lot of the improvements that we've made over the last few months. These are our boots on the ground that have been working hard to adjust to the difficult times that we're in and to make things work. Just to let you know some of our functions, it's really a two-fold function. We run the Permit Center, which handles all the building permits, processing, intake of discretionary permits, and public information. This is the tip of the spear, and for a lot of people that do business with the county, this is their first and sometimes only contact with the county, so this is a very important function of our department. And then we also have in the back room the processing of these discretionary permits. These are subdivisions, use permits, variances, and we take those projects from start to finish and work with other departments to make them successfully processed. At the Permit Center, I wanted to give you kind of a snapshot of some of the trends that we've seen in the Permit Center over the last couple of years. This graph on the board represents the number of building permits that have come in in the last two and a half years. On the left side of the graph is January two thousand and eight, and then we have January two thousand and nine, January two thousand and ten in the middle. You can see that there, through two thousand and eight, there was kind of a downward trend on permits coming in, and since two thousand and nine began a fairly decent leveling off. So there's not been a dramatic drop in permits lately as a response to the economy, we've still seen a lot of building permits come in. We just wanted to point out a couple of the troughs you see in the graph. We see this trough pretty much every January during the winter months, when building permit activity is much lower. But you also see in the spring every year that there's a steep climb as people start new projects. There's been a lot of layoffs, as you know, in the RMA planning, if you consider the Building Division, the Code Compliance Division, and the Planning Division together, we've lost nearly half of our staff due to budget cuts, and that's necessitated changing a few things around and cross-training. With some of those layoffs came a loss of institutional knowledge and specialized abilities and skills, and so we've had to cross-train. A lot of planners have had to take on new assignments and learn new things, including at the Permit Center, all planners are now working a shift at the Permit Center. This is broadening our knowledge base and has allowed us to keep that function of the department going during the difficult times. If you look at the building permits process, we've been able to keep up with the flow over time, and I'll show you later, it's had some dramatic consequences though as well. In order to handle the situation, we've assigned an additional planner to assist the Permit Center full-time. We've changed our policies, we've changed the zoning code to streamline and simplify the processes, to make it quicker and easier to get permits where we can do that and still meet the county goals. We've introduced CSAT workers over the summer, which have been a tremendous help, we've had four good young people in there helping us with a number of tasks, which has facilitated things. And then we've also adjusted within the department the use of our clerical staff, which has been a terrific help. Some of the results of these measures have been, we've seen building permits go from taking seven to eight weeks to get completed, processing, to about four weeks, just using those methods. That's not an exhaustive list, but those are some of the main things that we've done. Recently, we've been starting a couple of new things. One and Done is an effort to eliminate the second review that planners normally do on the building permits. Now they just look at the permit once, and it's done, and they send it off to the other departments, rather than having it come back to the planners and then go back out again. We've also recently imposed new hours of operation. We have several hours in the day where the Permit Center is closed to the public, and this has allowed the planners to have time to get to those building permits and public information requests that they have. Just an early look at what we expect this to lead to, is dropping it from four weeks down to another two weeks, to two weeks. four weeks down to another two weeks, to two weeks, not another two weeks, but down to two weeks. Cutting the time in half it takes to get a building permit. An early look at how this has worked out, we, when we started the, the new hours of operation a couple of weeks ago, we had a big backlog of building permits, about 60 permits waiting in the backlog. In the first week, we cut that down to half, 30 permits, and then when I checked yesterday afternoon, we were down to less than five in the backlog. That exceeded our expectations. We thought it would be several weeks, maybe a month before we were able to eliminate that backlog. So an early look at the hours of operation, it's been very successful in getting these building permits out. And, once eliminated, we believe we'll be able to keep on top of those really well and meet the two-week mark without too many problems. Discretionary permit processing, the trend shows fairly similar to building permits. There's been a decline in 2008, then a leveling off after that. Wanted to show you, while the blue line represents the discretionary permits coming in, the red line represents the permits that were processed or completed during that time. And you can see there was a large, I'll get my pointer out here. During this time, there was a big drop-off in the number of projects completed in 2009. This is about when, the time period where we instituted the cross-training, where plans were taken off discretionary permit processing, given other assignments at the Permit Center, and you see it affected the, the output. Recently, we've, we've added a few measures to get that number back up to where it should be. In the recent months, you see a spike, and some of the things that we've done in the last few months to, to create that spike were adjusting how we prioritize projects, further establishment of teams within the department to focus on specialized tasks. Again, it's been a big help recently having these CSAT workers and changes to the ordinance, improved our communication. We've seen projects averaging during this period, try to see if I can get this pointer working. We averaged about five projects going out each month. In the last few months, we're averaging about 20 projects going each month. So, some of these measures we've taken have been successful in getting us back on track and getting projects out. And at the same time, working with the cross-training program, not abandoning it, but, but working it into the system so that we can continue that necessary portion of our function. There's a few other things we're working on now and in the future. We came to you a little while ago talking about a pre-application project, process, and adjusting, meeting with applicants informally before they submit their plans to discuss project issues, and we believe that'll lead to fewer conflicts and problems with progress and ultimately getting them out faster and at a lower cost to the applicants. That way help us get more projects out in a timely manner. We talked, we've talked about the new software that will help facilitate researching of these projects and processing of these projects. Can't really calculate how much that will help, but we know it'll be very significant. We're digitizing files, we expect a reduction in time spent processing projects and therefore an ability for our planners to do more on, in a given day. Wanted to show you that, that these, these adjustments are working, we have others on the horizon, and we've seen some, some good results recently. What I passed out earlier was a copy of a monthly report that we give to the Planning Commission. We plan to make it available to the board as well. It just gives a list of all the projects that were approved that month in the big, in the big square, and a graph of where we're at with projects as far as numbers, and in the smaller squares, which projects are on hold, how many we have in the, in the works currently, and the same for the building permits. So it's kind of a snapshot of what's going on. concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Ben, I appreciate the presentation, I'm sorry that the press is not really, all of the press has not been here to hear this, because there was an editorial some time back that blasted the county for taking the easy way out of changing our hours of operation, and came to my mind is that customer service is more than just being there to receive something. If you don't deliver on it in a timely fashion, you're gonna have unhappy customers. And I can, from what you're showing us, it would appear that we would be having happier customers because they're getting their permits and they're being processed more, in a more timely fashion, and are being able to get their projects moving forward more quickly. And that's, that's really what customer service is about, it's the whole picture, it's not just a part of it. So, sound like you're making some, it looks like you're making some good improvements, and that's encouraging to us. This is an issue that comes before the board very frequently. As you said, many, for many people, their only interaction with the county oftentimes is in your department, and often we find that they're the people who contact us to complain about how, how long it takes. Some of it's expectation, some people have the, the impression they can walk in and walk out and, and build a mansion, doesn't really work quite that way, but, but nonetheless, I think that, and that's part of it, is giving them the proper expectation, meeting that expectation, and, and moving forward, and streamlining the process is, is key to how we're gonna be able to move forward to future. Mr. Cox?
Great to hear, your permit backlog is down, that was probably one of the only phone calls I would receive from folks complaining about anything, didn't get the pothole or, you know, chickens and dogs, that kind of complaints, but I did receive calls from contractors. So, I'm, that's great news. Glad to see a monthly project report. I asked for this five years ago and was told it didn't exist. I'm glad it exists now, this is great news, I like to see this. Do you keep year-to-date data, these little boxes down here on the bottom as well? I would imagine you do somewhere. That'd be interesting information to maybe throw on the backside of this to see how much work has been done. The only one question I have is there's an on-hold item on here, what does on-hold mean?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Cox, on-hold represents, it's a status a project take for a number of reasons. A project may be put on hold if it has incomplete information, if they, if they miss something. It may be put on hold if the applicant has not paid all their fees. That is the most common reason for projects being put on hold. And then when they come in and pay their fees, it's taken off of that status and, and pushed through. It could be a number of other reasons, sometimes the applicant wants it placed on hold for some reason.
Alright, thank you.
Since on-hold was being, was brought up, I just want to make sure, you know, I, I know of an instance that I recently had a meeting about where on-hold meant being put on a shelf, and it was left there. So, I, you know, I commend the staff, you know, it's great to see the monthly project report, and I know that the Planning Branch has undergone a lot of changes, and you guys are doing so much with very little, and you're getting, you continue to get better. I would just encourage the improved communication between the RMA Planning Branch and the actual applicant, so that both sides are aware of what's going on even when an application is on a shelf. And I know that that was a result of a prior administration in RMA, but I, you know, I just, going forward proactively, let's just make sure we keep the open communication with the customers and deliver the complete picture of customer service that I, I know you all want to deliver, we'll just have to make sure we follow through with it. So, thank you for all your efforts, and, you know, it looks really great to see this progress report, thanks.
Thanks.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, one more comment, if I can give credit where credit's due, just to credit the boss, Jake, for taking bold action.
Is that what you're whispering in your ear?
No, I added that. Jake did want me to acknowledge the other departments, though, that are part of this. It's a, it's a team effort through, with all the departments, Fire Department, Building Department, Environmental Health.
Good point.
They're part of the process, and they've stepped it up too, so.
Very good, thank you. I entertain a motion to receive the presentation?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. And that will take us to item number 40, Request from the Resource Management Agency to Receive Recommendations of the Ag Advisory Committee and Planning Commission, looking at criteria for public and private utility structures located on agriculturally-zoned lands and lands under Williams-McMack contracts. And, you know, we try to get away from that term Williams-McMack because it's the California Conservation Act, and we like to try to use that term because we want the state of California to step up. It's their act, they ought to be paying for part of it. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Worley, members of the board, Mr. Russo, other members. Before I begin the presentation, I do want to point out, I do have copies of the presentation over here for the audience, if they want to grab one. Again, this is John Heiser from RMA Planning Branch. I would like to begin with the request, establish criteria for public and private utility applications on agricultural designated lands and Williams-McMack contracted lands. You say California Conservation, requesting, receive the recommendations of the Agricultural Advisory Committee and Planning Commission, and adopt resolution establishing criteria for public and private utility structures located on agricultural zone lands and lands under the Williams-McMack contracts. This is, I want to kind of over-provide a summary that this is an ongoing dialogue between the members of the board and the stakeholders, Planning Commission and Agricultural Advisory Committee members. Again, summary meetings held, we've had meetings with the board, Planning Commission, Agricultural Advisory Committee, the Tulare County Farm Bureau, California Department of Conservation, and stakeholders. The, we were trying to map out the process over the last several months regarding the first portion of this was to receive zoning interpretations on agricultural zone lands. We've held several meetings. Those zoning interpretations were approved under resolutions. The first resolution excluded agricultural lands from the zoning interpretations. After the AAC meeting with RMA staff, they supported the requests. We brought that information back to the board, and the board finally determined that yes, they were added, the agricultural lands were added back into the zoning interpretation. The second level or second portion of the meetings, we requested the review criteria for recommendations. We've identified tier one and tier two of how we're going to approach these facilities on agricultural lands and Williams-McMack contracted lands. The board provided direction back to RMA staff to get the, receive recommendations from the Planning Commission and Agricultural Advisory Committee members. The Agricultural Advisory Committee recommendations on the criteria were solar facilities on all contracted lands, whether that be on prime or non-prime, must submit for cancellation prior to approval. The Planning Commission recommendations recommended the methodologies and analysis provided by RMA staff is adequate in addressing the public and private utility structures located on ag lands with the essential items in Level One and Level Two criteria, that it was not mandatory for cancellation of Williams-McMack lands. This kind of provides, this slide provides a summary of the meetings on the zoning interpretation. We've held meetings on June 8th, board members, requesting the zoning interpretation. June 16th, we had a meeting with the AAC, the Agricultural Advisory Committee, which supports the, the special use permits with developer agreements on agricultural lands. We met with the Tulare County Farm Bureau on June 24th, discussing the zoning interpretations and the Williams-McMack conservation discussions. On July 1st, 2010, we had a conference call with the Department of Conservation at the state with their discussions and regarding their abstract paper on solar facilities on Williams-McMack contracted lands. Put down their recommendations, which has been presented here in the staff report as well as the attachment ones, attachment one with the report. RMA staff met with the members of the board again on July 13th regarding these first level of recommendations. The board adopted Resolution Number 2010-0590, adding agricultural lands as recommended. And, second portion of that meeting on July 13th, adopted Resolution Number 2010-0591, accepting the two-tier review process including preparing criteria considerations. The board directed again to RMA staff to receive recommendations from the Agricultural Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission. On July 14th, RMA staff met with the Agricultural Advisory Committee members. They supported the methodology as presented by RMA planning staff. They did not support the facilities on prime farmlands. They recommended a reclamation plan and recommended cancellation of the contracts on prime and on-prime lands prior to approval. RMA staff, again, met with the Planning Commission on July 21st with the same information presented to the Agricultural Advisory Committee regarding our requests. The Planning Commission requested a reclamation plan, temporary uses versus re-energizing facilities was one of the concerns. Compatibility with the contracted lands findings, they also supported maximum flexibility. They also requested that the meeting be continued for further information. So on July 23rd, RMA staff hosted a stakeholders meeting for about four and a half hours with the Farm Bureau, the State Farm Bureau, members of the Agricultural Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, other interested parties, to discuss these issues, and there is a highlights of the outcomes. Then, on July 29th, we attended the Farm Bureau's meeting and heard a presentation from one of the applicants, SolarGenUSA. Again, the Farm Bureau does not support projects on Williams-McMack contracted lands, and will challenge approvals located on those contracted lands. Therefore, on August 11th, planning staff went back to the Planning Commission as a continued item. The Planning Commission provided the recommendations to the board, again, as the methodologies analysis found adequate and non-mandatory for cancellation. Today, we're coming back and based on those recommendations for your consideration regarding the criteria considerations of these projects located on non-Williams-McMack contracted lands and on contracted lands. Again, summary of meetings, these are the highlights, and the, an attachment one in the report provides additional information on those meetings and outcomes. Wanted to go into the Level One criteria, as RMA planning staff presented for the board and to the Agricultural Advisory Committee members and the Planning Commission members. Criteria one, again, is for those utility structures located on non-contracted lands, again, subject to use permits and developer agreements. Where the methodology and proposed criteria was looking at not necessarily supporting these facilities on prime farmlands as defined by the California State Farmland Mapping and Monitoring Program. Analyze the coverage of these facilities on agricultural zone lands and their operations. If located on non-prime farmlands, no objections, but it still required the use permit and public hearing findings. Required developer agreements, proximity to the electrical grid corridor, water availability, reclamation plan similar to SMARA, returning to agricultural use after life of project so that will allow for the removal of these facilities. And the sequo findings, temporary uses versus the loss of ag production on lands and mitigations if necessary. It was determined that the Rural Valley Lands Plan Scoring System does not apply to these projects. Level Two criteria as proposed would accommodate those projects on Williams-McMack lands, again, subject to special use permit, developer agreement, and findings of compatibility. Level Two criteria require all the analysis permits identified on Level One. We would identify these projects according to Resolution Number 89-275, the county's Uniform Rules for Agricultural Preserves, which looks at community utility facilities as compatible uses on these contracted lands. And if those facilities were located on the farmland security zones, again, the similar language, for some reason they put communication in there. language, for some reason, they put communication in there versus community utility facilities. And we also look at the Williamson Act contracted contents per property owner as the analysis. The decision tree was raised by Mr. Kirkpatrick as a way of looking at analyzing these projects. It was recommended both by the Agricultural Advisory Committee members and the Planning Commission to institute this type of decision tree up for consideration. And if you would like to, I can go into the additional meeting detail highlights as part of attachment one to kind of go over those meetings if you'd like. That kind of concludes my presentation.
Any questions by members of the board? Phil, you've been our representative on the ag committee?
It's been interesting, they did, Mr. Chair, want to make sure their voice was heard, their recommendation was strong and clear to require cancellation of contracts prior to or in, in timing with the special use permit to allow solar farm projects on Williamson Act lands. I tend to agree with that, they had very strong rationale to recommend the cancellations. I look at Mr. Kirkpatrick's tree here, I like the idea of having the tree, there's a clear path to follow as you hit bumps in the road or face certain questions. So that was the one thing that really clearly came out from the Agriculture Advisory Committee that was loud and clear is no solar farms on contracted land, and if they want to have the solar farm there, they have to file, you know, the non-renewal.
And to be clear, the understanding is that it would not be just the filing of a no non-renewal, it would actually be the termination of the contract?
Yes.
So you'd have to go through that process and make, and we'd have, can't have to make those findings in order to do that for an early termination? I know that other counties have come to different conclusions. Counselor?
We've been trying to trace that down. There are three counties that have come to the conclusion that they are not compatible. One county, there was a conclusion reached by the council's office that it was a compatible use. There have been no sightings of projects in that county, nor has the board made a formal determination because it is your board which makes that determination and sets the local conditions. In Kern County, which determined that, the board determined that it was not a compatible use, they have cited a huge generation facility in the southern part of their county, and that was an extensive permit and environmental review process. That's about as much as we've been able to find out.
Kings County has found it to be compatible.
That's a determination by their county council's office. Board has never made a decision one way or the other, and there has been no permit, there's no project that's actually on a Williamson Act contract or Conservation Act contract property. Of all the counties that we reached out to, we found only four that have done anything in regard to this question.
Have you had, are you privy to the opinion expressed in writing by the Kings County legal staff?
We have discussed that with them. This matter is on your board's closed session agenda, and I would feel much more comfortable discussing that in closed session, since it essentially is legal advice of a sort. But yes, we did discuss that with them. I have to tell you that it is my impression that none of the counties that have considered this question have gone to the extent that this county has gone to, to reach out to stakeholders, to hold meetings, to go through a formalized process, to come up with, you know, a decision tree and multiple options for consideration. The other counties seem to have been considerably less formal, is that a fair word, in their consideration of the question.
Mr. Cox?
If I could, the, the other recommendations from the Agriculture Advisory Committee were on the presentation, I don't want to let you think that there weren't others, but the, the non-support of facilities on any prime farmlands was there, requiring a reclamation plan with financial assurances was very important. So I mean, they, John did mention those, I just wanted to make sure I caught myself not to let you think that there was only one recommendation from that committee. There were several, and they are in the, the staff report. So there, there were other recommendations, that was the one that they spent probably the most time on stressing.
Mr. Vandepel?
I was just going to say that I think that the reason that we're here today with, you know, such a clear presentation is because of staffs reaching out to all the stakeholders and various interest groups. And, you know, I really commend you, I know it was a very extensive process, and many times it could be frustrating and long meetings, but it's worth it because we've been able to consider, never will be able to consider 100% of all comments, but a really good chunk of comments before we make this decision. We've got great information in front of us, so I just want to thank you for that, and then I also would like to hear from any stakeholders that are present, if they have any comments or questions or issues.
Yeah, I was going to allow that to happen. I also would like to meet with our counsel, I'd like a closed session. Do you want to go ahead and hear the public comments now?
I would like to.
All right. If there's anyone here this morning that would like to address this matter, please come forward and give us your, your name and who you represent.
Good morning.
My name is Bob Worthington, I'm the Director of Development for SolarPAC Development. Like to mention that the council's comments a moment ago regarding approved applications in Kings County is incorrect, they actually have two approved projects on Williamson Act lands. SolarPAC has a 20 megawatt project adjacent to the, a little nervous, adjacent to the Laurel substation. We did an extensive study of the infrastructure, electrical infrastructure and lands that were available to possibly site projects. Many of the lands that we identified are away from urban areas, but areas of consumption and importation. So that's a relatively small segment of the total available infrastructure to connect The second item is land use. For instance, a great deal of the property we looked at was tied to dairy operations with manure water spreading that required that acreage to be under cultivation for an existing dairy. Eliminate those. Other properties we looked at had trees and vines, representing substantial investment to the landowner many years in the future, so those were properties that really couldn't be considered. We eventually decided to talk to a number of landowners who had properties either directly next to a substation or on a power line. And the project we chose is, has a common boundary with the Laurel substation. It's the only property that we were able to, able to identify that had this type of available ability to connect to the infrastructure who had capacity, that did not have some other extraordinary use going on that tied the land to a particular activity. The owner has been very cooperative and enthusiastic, their family's been in farming for a great deal of time, and they're very happy to see our presence. Because of the placement of our operation, there's got, there will no, excuse me, be no third-party easements required, there will be no additional power lines, we're going to connect directly to the substation. So a great deal of the other issues that might impede such a project are not present here. And finally, because we're a solar PV photovoltaic operation, we don't consume any water on a commercial basis, we're actually just going to use about 300 gallons per day. So I boiled down in just a few moments, many months of investigation in Tulare County, trying to identify corridors where power could be injected, which is a rather small minority. Most of the infrastructure in California is antiquated, and the ability to find a location where you can put power in near an area of consumption, but fur, far away from an urban development is difficult. Most of the power in California is produced in the hills where it's hydro, and it's transported west. So the lines in the east are generally congested, and as you move west, you have areas of consumption. So the demographics of consumption, of land use, of zoning, of infrastructure boils down to a very small number of properties available. So when we chose to approach this owner on a Williamson Act parcel, we knew it would be a tough row, but we knew it was viable because there are so few opportunities, there was going to be substantial carbon avoidance, and we consider ourselves to be a temporary use. California law says that leases over 34 years in length are considered to be transfers. Our contracts on, based on our council's advice, do not go past 34 years, they're specifically designed to avoid transfers. So, and at the end of that contract, our contract stipulates that we remove the equipment. We use conventional building techniques, which allows the removal of the equipment and the easy transition back into row crops, dairy, whatever you have. That's about all I have to say, thank you.
One question, Mr. Worthington, in your analysis, how many acres then in Tulare County would meet the criteria you're talking about of being able to actually be utilized in this fashion?
I don't actually have a number. I have been investigating Tulare County for quite a long time, I'm here now talking to landowners for this very purpose, some in the Williamson Act, some in not. We operate under the Small Generator Application Program through Southern California Edison, which is designed by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And so we look at properties between 50 and 200 acres, which equates to about 3 to 20 megawatts, 20 megawatt plant allowing about 15,000 people capacity. So in my investigations, I've identified about eight properties that had the potential for this type of application, and these are various sizes. There may be more, but after having done this for many months and distilling down to what I consider to be a project that has a high level of viability, it's very few.
If you had eight parcels and the large being 200 acres, you're talking about maybe 1,600 acres of land?
These are projects that are anywhere between 40 acres and 200. So I would say maybe five of those.
But the maximum would be somewhere around?
Max would be 200 for our process. So I appreciate council's comments about the extremely large projects, but we practice something called distributed PV. The idea being to identify a spot and place a relatively small plant adjacent to an area of consumption. The company that I work for is a Spanish-based company. They have five projects in Spain with no new power lines created. Rice farms, dairy, or grazing lands, all kinds of uses that are nested within the agricultural community. And so the design is, in Spain, they've been able to put in two gigawatts, 2,000 megawatts of energy without any new power lines, but able to coexist with agriculture.
I actually thought gigawatts was a Back to the Future term that meant nothing.
He didn't know what he was saying.
Thank you. Mr. Ren.
Yes, Mr. Chair. How are you looking at the cancellation of Williamson Act? Are you willing to pay for the cancellation for these farmers?
We began the discussion with the owners prior to, well, it's been going on for about a year now, and a year ago, we had been talking with County Tulare, and they had been considering the question of compatibility or cancellation. We applied with the thought that we were going to need to cancel the Williamson Act. Personally, I believe that we can live together compatibility with solar because of our temporary use and the public benefit I think would be derived. There is not going to be a domino effect because the requirements are numerous, and there are strong economic factors that limit what we can do. So I can't have a wire here and put a plant 10 miles away. I have to be next to the wire or to the substation, better the substation. There is, particularly in these areas where they're importing power, the application of energy to that location reduces the transmission loads and allows it to go elsewhere. So Southern California Edison's very interested in seeing us here. So it's a great number of factors that are involved, but the reality is, there's very, very few locations in Tulare County or from California for that matter, particularly north of Bakersfield, that actually have an opportunity to have a viable project.
But are you willing to pay him out of Williamson Act if we have to cancel her?
That was all factored in, in our analysis, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Or of our contract.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other persons wishing to address this this morning? Morning, sir.
Morning, Greg Kirkpatrick, 1428 West Howard, representing SolarGen and their, their projects. We've had a number of meetings as we've seen over the last couple of months, I've been to all of them, and they folded me in out of the field long enough from our harvest today to attend this one. I think if I could summarize, I think what we've learned over the last couple of months in this discussion is that, and again, this is, this is my summary of, again, what I think we've learned, that there's general support from the ag community and, and others who have attended these meetings for solar generation facilities on agricultural lands, particularly on non-prime farmland in the county. There's a higher level of concern, certainly, and a higher level of review recognized that would be required for review of sites that would be proposed on prime farmland. One of the other things that we've learned is that the landowners, particularly for the projects that SolarGen is promoting in the southeast portion of the county, are keenly interested in remaining in the Williamson Act. That's the reason we're having this discussion, I think, is that it's the landowner's desire, it's really probably, it's somewhat SolarGen's desire as well, because we think it's good policy to leave these projects in the Williamson Act without canceling contracts. But primarily, it's the landowner interests that we're, we're working to express. Clearly, there's been concern expressed over the site citing these contracts or these facilities on non-contracted land. And yes, as Phil reported, the Ag Advisory Committee and the Tulare County Farm Bureau Land Use Committee have taken a very, I think, simple approach to this, just let's just say no, no contracted, or no projects on contracted land. I don't think it's a good policy solution, and we'll talk about that. Clearly, there are several, what we've also learned is that there are a number of options for dealing with the Williamson Act issue, making findings of cancellation both in the public interest and the normal findings of cancellation. Those are findings that you have to make as a board of supervisors, and it's- Those are findings that you have to make as a board of supervisors, and it's, again, not necessarily to be taken lightly. There are findings that have, not only just making that finding of the public interest, but also are there non-contracted lands adjacent to or nearby the property that are available for the similar use. And there are clearly, in state law, a procedure for making findings of compatibility. Now, these are, you know, the findings are laid out in Section 51-238.1. In the same way that you make findings for Williamson Act cancellation, you can make findings for compatibility. And clearly, and there's even special findings or a lower bar, if you will, for making those findings on non-prime farmland. There are two parts of that, Section 51-238.1. Parts A and B deal with prime farmland, and part C deals with non-prime farmland. So, there are clearly these legal procedures for doing that. The State Farm Bureau Policy Director in charge of Williamson Act policy and the California Department of Conservation concur that there's a legal process for making these findings of compatibility. And that was expressed in the meetings that we've had here locally as well. The Williamson Act contracts themselves and the Tulare County policy for findings of compatibility both lead to, or appear to indicate that utility structures are already listed as a compatible use under the contract itself. It may be a moot point. There may already be a legal right for these, and a legal definition of these structures as compatible, and we'll need to review that as we go through each of the individual projects. As I said earlier, I think, that having a simple policy for making the findings or for requiring solar sites not to be on contracted lands is not the best policy. Met at the law, non-contracted land in the vicinity of the Vestal Substation where three of our southeast county sites, SolarGen's southeast county sites are, the non-contracted lands are actually in citrus production, much of them. And I think that we would all agree that it's not good public policy when you have grazing land with no water and it's been dry-farmed for 150 years, that that's a more appropriate site than ripping out citrus and putting in a solar facility.
If I might comment on that before you go on, Mr. Kirkpatrick. You know, as we've been studying the California Conservation Act issues in Tulare County, it's been brought to my attention that on the very critical nature of that act as it applies to the non-prime lands, because, at least I've been advised, that many of our grazing people would be out of business but for
For the Williamson Act.
Williamson Act contracts.
Right.
So, you, it's probably not so surprising. It might seem initially that here's prime ag, not necessarily prime ag land, but citrus land that's not in the act because their taxes may be almost the same if they are or not.
Exactly.
Yet you have this non-prime farm property, which is grazing land that is in the act because without the act, the farmer would not be able to survive.
Clearly.
And so, that goes to your policy issue, I think, of a blanket that would say, you know, no construction on contracted lands, where in fact, you would really expect those contracts to be there because the history, historical use of that has been grazing patterns.
And the non-prime use that, and again, I think, clearly, there's a consensus for, we want to direct these sites where we can to non-prime farmland. And I would say too, yes, for several years, our Prop 13 assessment was below our Williamson Act assessment in our citrus farm. So, where was I? I think, you know, the procedure that we've developed over the last month and a half with the decision tree that we have in front of us, the staff's analysis and their criteria for reviewing these projects under the conditional use permit application process, and the support of that by the Planning Commission at their last meeting, really creates a procedure for making the appropriate findings and making good public policy. That's what the conditional use permit process and sequoian analysis associated with it is all about. And so, I think we have a good procedure in place with what staff has developed to be able to answer all these questions and to make the appropriate findings regarding the Williamson Act, at the same time that we make good public policy decisions about the impacts to agricultural land and prime versus non-prime sites. So, I think what we'll see, I would encourage you to adopt the staff's policy today and allow us to move forward. It gives us the roadmap for moving forward and presenting these projects for consideration by the Planning Commission. We expect to do that with our first project from SolarGen in October, and this will give us an opportunity. We're actually reviewing those findings and doing the initial study of that site right now and working through, and probably will be presenting that to staff within the next couple of weeks so that they can begin moving that forward through the process. This will allow us then to apply this criteria that the staff has created, make the appropriate findings, and decide which findings are appropriate in a public review process that we'll all be able to participate in, and that will refine, help refine our process and make sure that we're making good decisions. So, I'd encourage you to, today, to move ahead with the staff's recommendation and let's begin processing these projects, and if we find that there are problems associated with it as we move forward, we'll be able to make those corrections.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Anyone else wishing to address this this morning?
Hi, I'm Bill Geyer, Geyer Associates in Sacramento, representing SolarGen. Greg covered this subject pretty well, and all I would like to say is a couple of things. We've been focusing on the non-prime provisions of Section 51-238.1 as a way of moving forward in something that the Department of Conservation and at least the State Farm Bureau believes is legal. It doesn't mean that that's their policy, but they and I were involved in writing that non-prime, as well as the prime legislation in 1994, and John indicated that we had a workshop down here that that was available for local governments, intended to be available for local governments for making more flexible compatible use decisions than they might otherwise be able to make on prime land. I also wanted to address, as a part of that 1994 legislation, there was in fact a grandfather clause, which grandfathered the existing compatible uses that were on the ground, in the pipeline, or protected by contract. Now, you have a kind of a semi-complicated compatible use provision in the way that, and it's been in your contracts from the beginning. You implemented single ownership contracts, so you have both a contract and you have a preserve which has uniform rules, which are then referenced in the contract as being the uniform rules that apply to that preserve, including compatible use. Now, you were smart in how you did that because you didn't say, electrical facilities are automatically a compatible use. You reserved the right to review in your rules, the electrical facilities through a conditional use permit. And I think what your, and then that, that provision is still in the contracts, and in my view anyway, that provision was grandfathered by Section, the third of three subsections in Section 51-238.3. Now, how I understand that, as it's proposed to be applied, is that your RMA has essentially proposed to try to harmonize the, this right or expectation of the landowner that he may have an electrical facility considered as a compatible use with the provisions of the non-prime language in Section 51-238.1. And I understand their proposal to involve basically using those, those 1994 findings as the basis of making findings of approval. So, I think that's a, although there's, it would look like maybe there's two independent bases for you to make a decision to approve under the correct circumstances, compatible uses. I think that what your RMA has tried to do, and I think successfully from my standpoint, is to marry those two and make sure that the, that the non-prime findings in the 1994 legislation are followed, which is the guidance from the Department of Conservation, basically, that those are available. And at the same time, giving, you know, giving significance, as I think you must, based on how I read both the language of the contracts and the compatible uses in the preserve rules, by giving that longstanding contractual commitment that you made, which incidentally, you also have a provision in there, like many counties have, that says you may not reduce the number of compatible uses that are authorized without the written agreement of the landowner on that use. And that actually was a provision that the Farm Bureau way back then suggested and was widely adopted. So, I think you want to honor that commitment. I think the grandfather clause statute that I've cited allows you to do that, and I think you can by using in your local implementation the, the non-prime compatible use standards that the 1994 law set up. I think you can, you can basically embrace all of that in your process, and I think that's the legal foundation, as I, as I see it anyway, for what RMA is proposing to do in this process. And I think it's very thorough, and I think it does embrace all, you know, all the considerations that you have before you and have had before you ever since you entered into Williamson Act contracts.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address this morning? Does the Farm Bureau wish to make any kind of a statement this morning? I don't want to stop you. I just, I'm just asking. You're welcome to come forward. Come on, yeah.
My name is Erica Charet, and I'm one of the landowners where they're proposing to do some solar. The property that I have
Can you pull that microphone down just a little bit, please? Thank you.
The property I have is in the Williamson contract. It's been in my family since the early 70s. My grandparents purchased the property, and they farmed, and they have walnuts. I purchased the property in 2000 and have been farming it myself. I work two regular jobs, and I farm afternoons and evenings. I even had Mr. Cox's son out there in the field helping me because I can't do it all myself.
Desperate.
No, he's really good. Mr. Cox has even been to the house when he was practicing his pistol. But I, I'd like to see it stay in the Williamson Act. It's been in my family for a long time. My, half of my field is dead from the trees are so old, and they don't produce as much income as they used to. So, being a single parent, I have two sons, and I work two jobs and do the farming. The farming doesn't support itself, and with the solar project that they've proposed, and if I can keep it in the Williamson Act, or even if they have to cancel the Act, the lease agreement they've entered into with me, they would pay for the cancellation, they will pay for any upswing in the property taxes from what are incurred, what I currently pay right now. If they have to pull it out of the Williamson Act, yes, I get a great rate on property taxes right now. There's no way I could keep the farm if I had to pay the actual fees that are associated with it. With the lease agreement, it gives me a way for income, and I could quit one of my jobs. And in 30 years or in 20 years, if it's not renewed, the land can be, they'll put the ground back to plain dirt, and my boys would have a chance to do farming from a fresh start because right now, I can't afford to knock down the dead stuff that I have and replant. It's real expensive to get rid of old trees and put new irrigation in. I'm irrigating right now, and my electric bill last month was $1,100. It's just unbelievable, the amount of costs that go with it.
Excuse me, may I ask you a question? Is your land then prime farm property, it's not non-prime?
Well, when they say prime farmland, I look through your, the new Board's general guidelines, and it says to be prime farmland, it has to earn over $400 per acre of income per year, and mine didn't do that. It hasn't done that in quite a few years. But yes, I have water. Mr. Yoshida came out, and he saw where I have a big canal to the south of me, and they had talked about using my land as reclamation for runoff and prime. I suppose if someone had a lot of money to come out there and dig it all up and re, you know, take care of it, yes, it could produce.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Board members, Chairman Worthley, and members of the Board. Patricia Stever, I represent the Tulare County Farm Bureau. I had not anticipated comments today only because you've heard a lot from us through the various stakeholder process and ag advisory meetings and planning commission meetings. Mr. Kirkpatrick and I have gone back and forth at the dais many a time, arguing different points of this matter. You know, I was encouraged at the beginning of today's discussion to hear that our county council has, you know, contacted some of her peers and other counties to learn about, you know, actions they are taking and to kind of, you know, divide those fine lines between what has been legal interpretation and what has been actual action taken by boards of supervisors. You heard from a number of individuals today that have a very vested interest in seeing these solar projects move forward in the county. I think it's important, and I certainly represent what I would anticipate being a minority opinion here today, you know, the Farm Bureau is not looking to block all solar facilities from being permitted in this county. We do have very, as Mr. Kirkpatrick states it, simple, but I think, direct policy that I am guided by, that maintains that the Farm Bureau at both the California level and at the county level, do not believe that Williamson Act properties are the appropriate place to permit a non-agricultural use, such as a large-scale solar facility, that will probably consume more than 50% of the acreage in any given parcel as it relates to a contract and, you know, the future productivity or capability of that land. We know that there are circumstances that exist where land is capable of supporting agriculture, but maybe there are other reasons that the landowner is not choosing to farm that ground. There may be constraints with water. There may be constraints with, with family considerations or transitioning that land or succession plan for that land. And there are different output costs and overhead costs that agriculture is certainly challenged with right now in maintaining viability. Farm Bureau maintains its position that these properties, you know, should be taken out of contract if they're going to be the receiver of a special use permit for solar facilities. My understanding of the current pending applications in this county is that we have, I think, five on contracted ground, and then a number on non-prime, non-contracted ground. And I guess Farm Bureau's position would be to maintain that we And I guess Farm Bureau's position would, would be to maintain that we believe that these facilities probably do belong on some of that marginal, non-contracted ground. As our state land use director, Mr. Gamper, has commented on in some of these public meetings, there is a legal way in which a non-prime contracted piece of ground may qualify for compatibility. And we are, we've been given assurances a number of times that the county is going to look at each of these applications on a case-by-case methodology and that there will be special and unique circumstances considered with each of the land applications. So I expect that Farm Bureau will continue to maintain a presence at those hearings and, and try to work with the county to, you know, protect agricultural resources throughout. We do concur with the county's Ag Advisory Committee's findings. We maintain and support their findings and we just don't believe that these properties that are under contract are where these solar facilities should be permitted. We think there are suitable and marginal grounds outside of contract that are available and that those should be explored first.
Before you leave, in your analyses, there was no distinction made in your mind between prime versus non-prime? I, I go back to what I said earlier, which was that I'm, my understanding is that for people who have the non-prime grazing lands, Williamson Act contracts are very, very important to them to stay in business for grazing purposes. And when I think of grazing people, most of them don't survive on ten acres, forty acres or sixty acres. They may have twelve hundred acres, two thousand acres, three, large parcels of land because it takes a lot of land to support a viable type of, of industry such as that. And where the testimony today was that the largest parcel would be two hundred acres to do these types of projects, it would seem like, and the impact of the maximum of sixteen hundred acres out of all the grazing land of Tulare County is a very, very small percentage. Was that taken into consideration by the Farm Bureau?
I wouldn't disagree with the concern that, you know, there are grazing properties out there that would be very adversely affected if they had to be removed from contract. But as you've heard in testimony today, most of these properties, even if they're non-prime, they're going to probably hit that Prop thirteen ceiling and the solar company has apparently in most instances been prepared to take care of the changes in their assessment evaluation based on those Prop thirteen ceilings being hit. So, there's an ideological battle here about Farm Bureau policy and whether or not, you know, Williamson Act provides a compatible use or not for solar. It is, you know, Farm Bureau's contention that it's not an appropriate and compatible use. You certainly are going to continue to hear arguments on both sides of this, but in our belief, you know, we are not keeping these farmers from going forward with these pursuits. We are just asking that the Williamson Act, you know, not be eroded in terms of its integrity. We recognize that the Williamson Act is already under considerable threat and that this county has made it known to Farm Bureau that it may not be able to continue any of the contracts in the county come November one. So, we could be having this discussion for a number of months to come and it could turn out to be a moot point.
One, one of the things that concerns me is that, as you know, an early cancellation triggers a substantial fee-
Right, which is paid to the state.
-which is paid to the state of California. I didn't have a real problem, I don't think any of the board had a problem with doing that as long as California was subventing a loss of taxation to, loss, loss of property taxes to the county. And so, as you know, we used to receive three point four, three point six million dollars of subvention. As long as they received those cancellation fees and then turned around and gave some of the money back and for subvention funds, that's one thing. To, to turn around and give the money to California now, that is not subventing the program at all, it does leave a, a bit of a bad taste in my mouth. It also seems that it might be contrary to some of your own members of, of Farm Bureau. In other words, some of your Farm Bureau members are going to be adversely affected by this policy from Farm Bureau that says, "We don't think that there should be any such projects on Williamson Act contracted lands."
I do.
But that didn't seem to stop the, the Farm Bureau from taking the position it took.
Uh, no, it doesn't. If the Farm Bureau of this county represents about eighteen hundred production members and another six hundred ancillary service provider members, and at any given time there will always be some dissension and a minority opinion. If Farm Bureau was hamstrung by always having to listen to their minority opinion and those that are adversely affected, we would probably be a fairly ineffective entity and unable to ever speak with any clarity or cohesiveness on a matter. So, yes, there are certainly farmers that are adversely affected by this policy and this is not just a county Farm Bureau policy, it is a policy of the California Farm Bureau that has an annual delegate house that meets and discusses these policies and determines that this is for the, the greater order of the good. So, I'm charged with implementing that policy, whether all of my local membership can unanimously support that opinion or not. Thank you for your time. And I would ask that you support AB twenty-five thirty if it makes it through both bodies this next week because that may give our county an opportunity to save Williamson Act and provide some local dollars that will remain in the county. So I hope Mr. Rousseau's had a chance to study that and provide some analysis that will ask that you potentially opt into that choice if it's granted to us this fall.
We have been analyzing that and I've been involved in many conference calls on that particular issue.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was my understanding when the Farm Preservation Act went into place, that the assessment of that property was kind of basically based on the revenue that it produced. And that was the basis of the, the taxation. If we're taking farmland, grazing land, which traditionally produces twelve to maybe fifteen dollars an acre for grazing land, and you put a solar farm on it, is the, is the rancher receiving the same twelve or fifteen dollars per acre in revenue from it? So I think that's an important issue that makes a difference between the two. But I do, I would, unless other people like to speak, as soon as we're done speaking, I would like to go to closed counsel, closed session, because I have-
Legal questions asked. I, I do too, yes, as well.
If I'm not addressing some questions, you should, there's some inclusion.
It'd be great, Greg, but I've got, I'm a little like this lady who's been standing in the back to speak first. Thank you. Good morning.
My name is Carrie Helms and I am one of those grazing people that you're speaking about. My family's been here since eighteen seventy and I am looking at entering into a contract. The land I have is non-prime, the dirt's about as bad as you get, it is, has cattle on it now. It is in the Williamson Act and I am a member of the Farm Bureau, but I do, would like it if you kept it inside the Williamson Act. As I looked at the contract that has been presented to me by the solar company, I'm really nervous, it, there are different things where they, you know, have options, you know, where they can opt out after a certain period of time. They are thirty-four-year leases, but if, you know, I don't know what happens, but they can opt out. Well, then where does that leave me as a rancher and grazing land? You know, they'll remove the solar equipment, I still need to be in the Williamson Act? So that's just a different view, having looked at the legal contract, you know, from that side, point of view.
While, while Mr. Kirkpatrick is walking up, Roland Hill came to the last Agriculture Advisory Committee, a very interesting presentation on the subvention and the non-subvention and what it actually means to property taxes. Might be helpful to this board to see that presentation. It was very interesting to see on a property-by-property basis, and I think he took about eight properties to show exactly how the, the Conservation Act affects the property taxes. Very, very interesting, very complicated, but I think a very, maybe a very important piece to help the board before we jump in with both feet.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Greg, before you come, I really have to ask a legal question of our council. This is becoming a Williamson Act issue. And since I'm a member, I participate under the Williamson Act.
I don't think it would affect you any differently than it would affect the public generally. You're not actually granting or changing a contract, at least at this point in time. If that changes, we will let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kirkpatrick.
With regard to Williamson Acts and mentions and how that might work through some of these projects, Supervisor Ashita, I wanted to point out, we did meet with the assessor and have a discussion about that and we had our, our own thoughts, which the assessor concurred with, which basically, as you pointed out, is yes, the income level on these properties will increase significantly. That will result in a recalculation of the Williamson Act assessment on that property and more than likely what it will do is for that particular property will take the assessment of the property up to its Prop thirteen cap. And so that the, the assessment, Williamson Act assessment under the solar facility is likely to far exceed the, the base value under Proposition thirteen and so the, the landowners would be assessed as if they were in their Prop thirteen assessments. Now, the other issue about subvention I think that's important is, we're hopeful, and, and Bill Guyer was just pointing out to me that he got here very late last night after two o'clock because it was an Ag Committee meeting with John Gamper, the Director of Farm Bureau Williamson Act Policy, and the State Legislative Committee on Agriculture where they're moving back and getting a, it looks like we'll have a subvention proposal back in front of the legislature and we, I think it has a very likely chance of passing. It's well-supported by the Ag community and I think we'll find support in, in other, from other interest groups. The, so, let's hope that we'll have and, and, and continue to work under the assumption that we'll have Williamson Act here in the county, you know, for years to come. But at the same time, even if we lose the Williamson Act, the developer agreements that you've talked about creating with these projects and the solar, SolarGen and I think the other solar contractors who are developing them are in general agreement that, that development agreement will include payment of, for these project sites of their Williamson Act subvention to the county. So, another reason I think maybe to, it probably won't be a lot of income, but it will be, continue to bring in Williamson Act subvention dollars to those projects through the development agreement, or to the county.
Thank you.
I, I, I'm somewhat confused to, to a degree-
I do not blame you.
...that I think it's extremely important that we have an assessor, or, or assessor come through here and explain the taxation of this property.
Those are very, they are complicated questions.
Because I, the question I-
Mr. Hill, as good as it explained them.
The question I would have, it's okay, if you have grazing land, it's dirt and you have a Prop thirteen cap probably on that grazing land, but, so I would say the land part of your assessment would not change, but your improvement part of that assessment could change substantially.
Right.
So, there will be an increase in taxes that, that, that come into play.
Well, there could be two.
Those improvements are not taxable.
Pardon?
Those, those improvements-
Solar improvements are not taxable.
They're not taxable.
They are not taxable to the property owner and it's my understanding, at least right now, that the less C, the solar company, is exempt from paying what would normally be a possessory interest tax.
Chair, that's why I think it's important that we bring our assessor in here and have this presentation. A lot of things I learned through that presentation that were very helpful and beneficial.
If, if there's no other public comment, I'd like to go into closed session. Serge, do you want to make a comment?
Please.
Yes. You can use your microphone, I should have told you that.
Hi, my name is Doug Carter. I am, I work for SolarGen USA, part-owner. My address is eight four two three High Ridge Court in Castle Rock, Colorado. I've been out here the better part of, I don't know, year and a half or so working this. I want, first off, I want to say thank you to everyone who's worked on this effort. Supervisor Ashita's been out, Supervisor Vanderpool's been out, and so has Supervisor Ennis, and I appreciate their time. I want to say thank you to the landowners, Erica Shret, Carrie Helms. I want to say thank you to the Farm Bureau. You know, we started reaching out to the Farm Bureau a year ago and just brought the issues up and, and, and we realized we had a controversial issue, but we wanted to work on it. And so that's what, that's what's brought us to this point of what I think is a pretty thorough policy by the county and I want to say thank you to the county, too. They've made a very diligent effort to raise all the issues and bring them forward. So, thank you very much to everyone in this room. I wanted to clarify a few points. First off, we are interested in protecting the integrity of the Williamson Act. We're energy developers, we're not farmers. But on behalf of the farmers that we work with and the landowners, they are interested, so we are interested too. It's the way we conduct business. Second, as far as the, the taxes, I do think you need to have the assessor come in. It's always been our position that yes, the solar industry receives a tax exemption for any facilities installed, improvements to the property until twenty sixteen. After that, that exemption goes away. However, having said that, we always recognized that there were issues with that, that if a county did not benefit in some fashion from the improvements to the property, then we would be problematic in terms of demonstrating full benefit to a county. We have talked with the county about the development agreements and we do recognize that there'll be items in there that will wreck, result in revenue directly to the county and not to the state of California. We think that's a big advantage to the, to the county. So that's been our view, we've held it consistently since over a year ago when it came to taxes. We do also recognize on the taxes that within our lease, it's our belief, now the assessor, you need to talk to him, that there'll be an increase in property taxes assessed to the landowner, which we are responsible for paying. So that'll be another source of tax revenues in our mind. And that's how we're analyzing all our projects financially as we bid them into Southern California Edison. So that's our position on the taxes and the benefits of a development agreement. Any questions there? As far as the, I wanted to answer one of your questions, Supervisor Worley. You'd asked about how, how big would the impact be in the county of solar facilities? And I want to echo Mr. Worleyton's comments that we believe in the distributed nature of solar where the demand is. If you look, and I know you all spend a lot of time in county, if you look at the county, you have a string of substations that follow the ninety-nine corridor, a string that follow the sixty-five corridor and on north, and a string right in the middle. Those substations are there for a reason. Agricultural uses energy. Energy is a key component of what you do in this county, in my opinion. So we have cited our locations where we can close leases and we do compete with agriculture to close leases. I mean, if there's a fifteen thousand dollar revenue from a citrus crop, we can't hunt in that territory. But we do compete with Ag land for the use of that land on a purely economic basis. So, if we can find locations and they're hard to find, because there's lots of better uses than a solar facility on land, we will put those as close as we can to the substations and enter into a lease negotiation. On that assessment, when we looked at the county, there's about a thousand megawatts of demand here. And that's based on the Western Electric Coordinating Council's plans, they update these plans every year. Of that, we did some estimates, about four hundred and fifty megawatts is attributable to agriculture. According to this, to the executive order for the governor, thirty percent of the energy needs to come from renewable energy resources. That's about three hundred megawatts. If you break that down, and we use like a, a, a megawatt provides enough energy for about three hundred homes or, I think on our solar farms, we figured that one solar farm, which is about a hundred and sixty acres, would provide enough energy for about ten to fifteen thousand acres of agricultural use. If you break that down, the impact of that thousand megawatts, thirty percent is to come from renewable energies. If you break that down further, all that energy is already here and that has to come by twenty twenty. So our estimates have this coming around maybe three to five miles of, square miles of impact to the county. That county's got over four thousand eight hundred square miles of land. We see that cumulative impact as manageable. We see the permitting process that's put forward by the RMA staff as tracking that. They're well aware of the grid, they're well aware of this cumulative impact, we've had many discussions with them. And we think you have a straightforward, manageable policy where you evaluate each project on a case-by-case basis, finding for compatibility, finding for cancellation, whatever it may be, on the merits of each case. And I think that's a policy that the staff has presented and we support. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, for the benefit of the audience and people who may be listening, there's been reference to a bill pending before the legislature regarding sort of an alternative-
sort of an alternative Williamson Act subvention. That bill has to be passed by midnight tonight. And I have also been involved in what I refer to as the ten thousand conference calls. There are emails flying like bats regarding this issue and that issue that have come up. I, I certainly hope that it passes, but I do not think it is a done deal by any means.
At this time, we're going to go into closed session so we can speak to some legal issues. The ranks have thinned.
I cannot recall if I, prior to adjourning, announced the item we were adjourning to. It's item A on your board's closed session agenda.
Thank you.
I hope I did, just in case.
We're waiting for a couple, one member to make his appearance and then we'll bend away. Board is back in general session after consulting with our council. One of the discussions had to do with what is it we're looking at doing here today? And there was a little confusion, I think, on my part, perhaps some of the other members. On the one hand, you would have a group of people who might say, we would like the board to rule on a policy that says, under no circumstances will solar farms be allowed on contracted lands, that the lands that are under the California Conservation Act. And we probably have folks on the other side who would like us to make a policy that says, yes, we, we will be able to allow, and make a finding, if you will, today of compatibility on contracted lands for, for these types of facilities. In fact, what we are being asked today to do by our staff, the recommendation is that we adopt a policy that would put into place a procedure for going through on a case-by-case basis, a determination of whether or not a particular project is or is not going to be allowed under the special use permit process. Secondarily, whether or not it would be compatible with Williamson Act contracts. So in essence, we're not being asked today to make a finding of compatibility or incompatibility. We're being asked to adopt a process that will then, going through that process, will determine whether or not a particular project fits within the criteria that will be established by going through this process. So does that make it clearer to you? It was helpful to me to hear that, I think, from our council. There's some other issues we, we would like to have going forward because ultimately we'll, we will be making determinations on such applications. And the question about taxes, how it affects Califor, our, our county from a tax standpoint, having a presentation by our assessor would be appropriate because ultimately the decision will come back to this board of supervisors. But today, we're not being asked to actually render a decision. We're being asked, in that regard, we're being asked to render a decision about establishing a procedure. And so unless members have other comments or questions.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion to approve the staff recommendation. A motion by Mr. Ashida, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are four to one. Cox voting no. Want to explain yourself?
There's, no, not confusing at all. A little too loose on the prime agricultural land is all for me. I would have been a little more stringent and defined, no projects on primeland. That's the only reason.
It's not actually related to the Williamson Act.
Not related to the Williamson Act or anything else other than the prime versus non-prime for me. And I do support the process the staff has set up. I just think it's a little loose on the front end, not the back end, the front end.
All right. Okay. That concludes our general meeting this morning. We do have other items for closed session, council, that we need to handle. Thank you all for being here today. Thank you for taking your time to, to speak to us this morning. It's very helpful to us in our decision-making process.
Have other items on your board's closed session agenda. Mr. Chairman, you have items B through H. Item I is off agenda since we now have agreements with all of our, our labor associations. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you.